I would like to call this meeting of the select board of the town of Concord to order. At six thirty PM, I assume you declare and the first item is the consent agenda.
I think we need to do a roll call first.
Oh, because we have Linda, yes, that remote. Okay, so could you roll?
Uh, who was present tonight? Mr. Dane?
Present.
Ms. Escobedo?
Linda Escobedo, present.
Ms. Hartman?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, present.
Okay, now to the consent agenda.
Okay, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, and I just want to note that I will need to abstain because there is an item that is a gift from my wife to the town. But I don't believe we need to.
A beautiful gift. It's in the packet, that beautiful painting. And Mary, can you pass over all those?
Yes, the motions.
So could you have a?
Okay, a roll call vote. For the consent agenda, Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Thank you.
And thank you to Marvo. I love that painting.
And so now we will move to, sorry, to the town manager's report.
Okay, thank you and good evening, referring to the report that was in the packet for the weekend in April twenty first. As you might imagine, we're all busy preparing for annual town meeting, which accounts for why the report was maybe a little bit shorter than it has been in the past. I did want to to note the proclamations on the consent agenda and thank the board for issuing those proclamations. I know they mean a lot to the staff and there was a proclamation for for our dispatchers that that their week was April tenth. Administrative Professionals Day is this Wednesday. Municipal Clerks Week is is May first and Public Works Week is May fifteenth. So again, I know the staff really appreciate the recognition provided by the select board. In the Police Department, I wanted to note the appointment of Officer John O'Connor to the position of Acting Sergeant. We do have a vacancy. We will be scheduling sergeants exams and an assessment center in the coming months to make a permanent appointment there, but Officer O'Connor, now Acting Sergeant O'Connor, actually happened to be the first person at the top of the list for the last exam and but unfortunately that that timed out, so we're we're running another assessment center. Also, in the Fire Department, firefighter Samantha McChesney completed her eighth tough ruck last weekend. That is actually a marathon that Public Safety Police and Fire run in their turnout gear, usually with backpacks. So that that's quite an event. There's a couple of pictures in the report. Hard to see, but you can definitely see Samantha's running in her turnout gear. A note from the Fire Department that they have seen an uptick in mulch fires and they're asking people as as you have mulch in your yard preparing for the spring, that you be mindful and keep that at least eighteen inches away from any combustible part of a structure. Some information from our Building Inspections Department on the number of permits and inspections, definitely a lot going on in the town there. A note that if if you operate using Airbnb, there is a permit required. So if you are participating in that opportunity, please contact the Building Commissioner's Office to talk about the permit process. Economic Vitality and Tourism is reporting that they have received their translated visitors map. So the town received a grant to translate maps into a variety of different languages and those are available digitally and paper copies. And then I think the only other thing I wanted to mention was just an update on the middle school building project bidding process, and I'm just going to ask Gail Dowd, our CFO, who is our staff liaison to the committee, to just give you a quick update on that.
And Gail, you may want a mic.
Thank you. I'll say the whole thing and then have to say it all.
Yeah, and is the light on?
The light is on. Thank you. So we did send out a communication last Friday evening to the select board. It went to the School Committee, the Middle School Building Committee, as well as the Finance Committee to let folks know that the original bid opening for the general contractors was scheduled for last Friday. But due to a pending bid protest by one of the labor unions that is currently with the Attorney General's Office, we have not received a ruling yet, so we were advised to delay the bid opening. As of today, we are still awaiting the decision from the Attorney General's Office, so we are monitoring Friday. We postponed it to Friday based on the advice from the Attorney General to push it out a week. If we do not hear within the next day, most likely we will need to push it out again. And the rationale for that is depending upon the outcome of the decision, if the decision is made in favor of the GC, they are going to require additional time in order to prepare and submit the bids. So rather than risk receiving the bids and then having to not be able to utilize them, it is safer for us to hold off. We have continued up until receive other protests on this bid session as well, so we are monitoring those. We received one Friday, received another notice today, so we're monitoring it and trying to close them out as quickly as possible. But when you have these going on, it gets difficult to move forward with opening the bids until they are resolved.
Do they all go to the Attorney General?
There are two at the Attorney General right now and one has been submitted to us that we are hopeful to be able to close out before it goes to the Attorney General's Office.
This was a subbid, wasn't it? Probably not the.
This was the one that is at the Attorney General's Office now is a labor. The carpenters union filed a protest on the prequalification of the of one of the general contractors. So they are protesting the GC select, the prequalification of a general contractor.
What I I I don't know where I read it, what document it was. It may have been from the School Committee explaining this, but I think it said that that it was being delayed as a courtesy, not as a necessity.
It is a courtesy. The Attorney General strongly recommended that we delay the opening, so because no decision had been reached on Friday, we are unclear as to whether or not this particular GC is part of the process or not. So in order to move forward, not knowing if they actually can submit a bid complicates it. So she strongly recommended that the town delay the bid opening, which in our experience, you do not want to not adhere the guidance of the Attorney.
But if I don't really understand the process that well, but if if you open the bids, you doesn't mean that you have to accept any of them. So that if there's a protest against a bid, at least you, if you open the bid, you know what the bid is and you may not. So you have an idea of what it's going to cost, but you know, you may not be able to choose that bidder. Is that right?
The issue is that the particular general contractor who has the bid protest right now does not know whether or not they can bid on the job. So if they opt not to bid on the job and then the ruling is in their favor, you have to reopen the whole bidding process, which gets very complicated. So it is a safer alternative.
I mean, wouldn't they have submitted their bids by this time or?
No, because the hearing with the Attorney General was on the fourteenth, a week before the bids were due.
And so they just stop work and wait to see what that would be and don't proceed with their preparation of their bid?
As part of the hearing we had with the Attorney's Attorney General's Office, they requested extension to the bidding process.
So what impact is this going to have on what's coming up at the town meeting in terms of some of the items that are going to be moved or not moved, I think, depending on how the bids came in?
Our understanding, so there is a School Committee meeting tomorrow evening, at which time this will be addressed. Our understanding currently is that the motion will not be moved at town meeting.
Will not.
Will not. But that will be determined tomorrow night by a vote of the School Committee.
Wait a minute, the motion for Article nineteen, you're saying?
For the.
The one point eight, one point eight million.
So there is an agenda item tomorrow night proposing not to move it.
Right. I have another question. There's something in our correspondence, I believe, that from the middle school, an update on the middle school bids and it has all these dates in it, which is new piece of correspondence that got added to.
Well, it's the quarterly report of the middle school.
But those dates are now completely.
They're they're out of date.
All right, even though we just got it today.
Yes, they're already out of date. Yeah.
Thank you.
This all came down on Friday afternoon, so it is an ever evolving, so we will monitor it throughout this week. Bless you.
But the. So the second protest from the pipe fitters, I think, could that?
We have one that is from the carpenters union is the one that's currently with the Attorney General's Office.
My question is, do you think that these other protests could delay it further?
there is one that I am hopeful that will not be the case, but there was a request today submitted to the Attorney General's Office requesting a hearing. So it will depend on whether or not she grants the request for the hearing. If the request for the hearing is approved, it could potentially delay.
And so is it already a foregone conclusion that the groundbreaking will be delayed?
No, there there is still time. We're not, we're about a week behind schedule now, so depending if we're able to open the bids this coming week and work through the selection and the contract negotiation. We we're not at that point yet.
Okay.
Who I I.
I mean, this is not strictly an agenda item. This is simply a update from the town manager. So okay, maybe we need to put it on our agenda for a future meeting. I don't know. I mean, it sounds like depending, it will either become an issue that worthy of a real agenda item or not.
We want to understand it before we go to town.
And for clarification, I want to understand.
Well, maybe we could move that discussion to the agenda item that we have later in the meeting to discuss Warren Articles and take decisions.
But this article isn't going to get moved.
We don't know.
We don't know that. I mean, that's the that's the assumption, but we don't know.
Can I just ask one more clarifying question? So if the bids were opened on Friday, the twenty eighth, I understand that we won't have time to really put it together and really know. But will we have some kind of a sense for town meeting?
It gets a little tricky because you have to go through and look at them and then the filed subbids and make sure that everything is complete. So it most likely would not give adequate time to fully assess the responses and determine if anyone would get
Okay.
potentially disqualified if it wasn't a complete.
But it's up to the school committees tomorrow, their vote.
No, whether to move Article.
Whether to move it, right, whether to move the article.
That's just specifically.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah.
But I saw actually whether any of the bids are yet to be up to the town manager, is that correct?
It.
Go ahead.
It would go before the Building Committee, so the results would go in front of the Building Committee for them to take a vote to approve the awarding of the contract, which would then ultimately be
signed by.
By the town manager.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for our town manager after having that trip down the rabbit hole?
We're still on school. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so moving to the chair's remarks, I have a sort of special, oh, the screen sharing's been disabled. I need to share my screen. Hopefully that can be enabled.
It should be.
Now it's enabled. Thank you. That was like magic. So I I wanted to just share the summary of our progress against the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Select Board Goals. And so I prepared a short document and that I've included in the packet and here, if you will, in allow me, I will share a spreadsheet just that in case we have questions, I can quickly bring up decisions here. So the summary is, we had fifty-two goals this year that if you break them out into discrete things. Of those fifty-two goals, two of them weren't done. Five of them were deferred. In other words, there were things that we couldn't do because of outside factors. Okay, so there there are no faults of our own, but we didn't do them. The then there are about ten of them that we did some work on, but we didn't finish. And so I called them in process and then there are thirty-five of them that we actually got done. So if you think about that, what happened is about sixty-seven percent, two thirds of our goals, we got done. But then if you want to sort of give us a grade, I would say we get half credit for the ones in process. We ignore the ones that were deferred and we get no credit for the ones that were not done. So that gives us a B, eighty-five percent. Okay?
I think a B is great.
Are we going to get expelled?
No, B isn't passing grade. It's what doesn't get us on the honor roll.
No financial age.
I think, Matt, you should be on the honor roll. I think forty-seven out of fifty-two is amazing. And I know you pushed really hard in the last few weeks to get the last few goals in here and you know, keeping us organized all year. I I'm it's I think it's very impressive. In fact.
By the way, it's forty out of forty-seven.
But one of the ones that you say is not done, I would.
Well, and in fact, we can quickly go to that. What I wanted to do first, though, was to just look at the priority goals because those are the most important. And once again, out of the priority goals, we had, we completed seven of them in by my tally and there were three that we didn't finish, but are I would consider to still be in process. And those are the rep evaluating the recommendations of the Personnel Bylaw Study Task Force and proposed the future charge of the Personnel Board. We have not addressed the future charge of the Personnel Board, so that's yet to be done. That's planned. It's coming up soon. The DEI Commission goal, I would say, is not complete. But we have certainly done work in support of DEI over the year. And then the transportation study is not yet complete, right? We we're sponsoring it sort of, but that that's not yet done. The others, I believe, we can say we're we've done. We've done it. And so that's good because the priority goals are, of course, the most important. Then the next thing to look at is, okay, what didn't we get done? And so what especially should you be looking at over the coming year to perhaps address? Yes.
So that's when I was, one of these two I was going to talk about. I think we did start one of these. Advised the town manager on opportunities to improve the town website. I remember maybe Shannon was here and Carrie and Shannon said, if you have suggestions, please email us.
Yeah.
And I did email and I I know it's in process.
Okay, we could call it in process and our grade just went up.
I think it should. I think we have a long way to go on the website.
Well, I that's my concern is I don't really feel like we did any kind of a comprehensive review. It might have been ad hoc suggestions, but.
Right.
So anyway, just the things that we deferred, so the infrastructure bill funds from the feds, we don't know what we've got to work with, so we couldn't do that. The Recreation Open Space Strategic Plan, we don't have a plan to to look at. The Municipal Light Development Plan for Municipal Solar, we don't have one of those to look at. The Town Manager's Report on the REC, we don't have one of those either. So we and then updating the Regional Dispatch Center Agreement, well, we didn't get to that either. So so those are all things that are pending and that I think all deserve more attention next year. In terms of not done, we I I still think we didn't do enough with the town website and we should.
Right.
And then we did not do diversity, equity and inclusion training sessions for the select board. And so those are that we still need to do. Okay, so that's the the summary. I also put the list of all the goals with their status in the in the packet.
It's in the packet.
It's all in the packet.
So that means I don't get a bonus this year.
No, none of us do.
I was counting on that to pay the increase in my real estate taxes.
No, sorry. Sorry, we didn't meet the threshold. So, okay, but I mean, I think we we make satisfactory progress. And so that is better than unsatisfactory.
Lot of work to compile that.
Lot of work. I think I think thank you, Matt, for organizing this and it's a really good track record.
Okay, so now let's move to our next agenda item, the application for a change of directors and officers for the Concord Rod and Gun Club.
Hello there.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Dan Boyanich. I can't start the video. It says the host has stopped it. So you can't see me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, there I am. Okay, great. Hi there. Okay, so every year we have elections.
Did you identify yourself first of all?
Yeah, Dan Boyanich, President of Concord Rod and Gun Club.
Thank you.
Yeah, so every year we have elections and whenever we change officers and directors, we file a change of beneficial interest with the Alcohol Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. And we provide supporting documentation and the town of Concord gets a copy of that. And as a result, you know, I'm on the agenda for this. There is no change of manager or anything like that. It's purely a change of officers and all the officers have zero beneficial interest as it happens. So it's a bit of a paradox. But it's a formality.
Okay.
So we're not asking for anything, you know, we're just informing you.
Right. I mean, there's quite a bit of detail in our packet.
Right.
Questions from the board.
I have I have a question. This is really just to educate me. So you're a rod and gun club off of Strawberry Hill Road. That's correct, right?
Correct.
And you have target practice? Is that pistols, rifles?
We 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 have outdoor shotgun, both five stand and trap, and we have an indoor pistol range. And we have outdoor three.
So outdoors is shotgun?
Yes.
Are there hours that restrict that or are they, what are the hours of that?
We we have internal hours where we 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 basically don't allow the use of the shotgun for target on Sundays between nine and one o'clock. But we allow the use of shotgun from nine o'clock in the morning normally until dusk.
Except Sunday.
Except Sundays, yes, Sunday mornings.
So it's nine to dusk. Okay.
And that does not include hunting, of course. That's just purely for target.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Then could we have a motion?
Move to approve the application for a change of directors and officers for Concord Rod and Gun Club, Inc. at seventy-four Strawberry Hill Road.
Do I have a second? Looking for a second.
Well, I think I'm going to abstain from this one as a member of the club.
Okay. Linda, could you provide a second? Mary seems reluctant.
Second?
Thank you. And then roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Dane, you're abstaining?
I am.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Thank you. Okay. Now moving to the next item, which is to designate an approver of town accountant warrants. And this is coming up because my term is ending and we are not going to have another Select Board meeting until May fifteenth. And so there in the interim, there's not an approver, a designated approver after my term ends. So we need to find a volunteer.
I'll do, how often does it have to be done?
Weekly.
Move back to a weekly warrant.
And that's good news and bad news. Bad news is that you have to do it more often. The good news is there's less stuff each time.
I can I can do it.
So everybody okay with that?
Thank you, Mary.
It's it's just for this temporary period. I mean, typically the chair takes this.
Right.
This job. Okay, could I get a motion?
Move to approve Mary Hartman as a designee to approve town accountant warrants until May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
A second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote. Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
I'm really sad not to.
I can tell. I'm really looking forward to it.
I may have one more left. I don't know. I can't remember.
That's okay.
Yeah. Oh, actually, no, now that I've got a temporary. Oh, 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 I like it.
It's the best part of the job, right?
Oh, gosh, no, I think I've got, we've designated a new a new.
We just voted.
Yeah, I love it.
Well, you don't have to sign the checks.
My vacation is already beginning. All right, so now we're ready for the DEI Commission update and I see we have some members here. And so if you'd step up to the table, also please take advantage of the microphone.
Hi, I'm Josh Lee.
Hi, Josh.
Andrea Poncerrada.
Andrea, thank you for joining us tonight. And this is an update that we had planned some time ago. And I know that quite a lot has happened in the interim, in particular the survey and the published results in the survey, so let us know.
So we have, we're fairly flexible about what we discuss. We do have two documents. I apologize, they weren't in your packet. We were all we were preparing quite a lot of stuff over the weekend. One is an executive summary of the results of the survey. So if we can share Andrea's computer, we could take you through.
Okay.
The others, we have the document around Article ten for town meeting in support of a of a DEI director position. If you haven't seen that, we could show you the wording that.
I think it'd be very helpful because later on this evening, we will be deliberating on that article.
Okay. Well, I'd suggest we start with the survey since it provides sort of a grounding for for the article regulations. So how do we get?
Login to join us in. You have a copy.
Oh, okay, I've just got it online here. I'm fine.
I have the meeting ID.
At this last year.
Yeah, that was that packet I just gave.
I know. You were there.
Yeah, I was going to say, how many of the board have already reviewed the survey result?
I was at the.
I was at the meeting.
The slide deck we got.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, there's that, but actually there were, there were, first of all, there was a DEI Commission meeting where these results were reviewed, but then there was also a public meeting.
Right, Linda was there. Linda was.
Yes. Were you able to review that? I see your hands up.
Yes, I I was there and I I reviewed it.
Linda was, and I was there.
I did too.
Okay, and then I've reviewed those results and Henry, have you had a chance to look at this? Because I think that might streamline the discussion because we could just focus on some of the the key points that.
Yeah, yes, I have.
Okay.
All right. Well, as we've gone through this and shared the story several times, there are really four major results of the survey. The first is that we had six hundred and twenty-six respondents.
Yeah, participation was excellent, especially considering the length of the survey.
Yeah, yeah, we were happy. We felt like that was a good result. The the second finding is that sixty-six percent of the people who responded said that they had either experienced or witnessed bias or discrimination in Concord, which we thought was a high number. And then what's the number of businesses in a in a private business?
Sixty-seven percent of people have experienced some type of discrimination in a private venue in Concord. And I think it's, um, twenty percent of the respondents, let me just bring that up. Reported having experienced unfair treatment from a town office.
Okay, and then if you could speak up Andrea with, uh, because it's a little hard to hear.
Uh, but I, I was saying that almost twenty percent of, of respondents reported having experienced, um, unfair treatment from a town office.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then the last major finding is we asked the, in the survey, what could be done to improve the diversity, equity and inclusion environment in town? And the number one response was to hire a full-time DEI director.
So how many people out of the six hundred and twenty-eight?
Um, we should have that number, but, um,
That's okay, that's okay.
What we did is we asked the respondents to rank in order of priority, um, several initiatives, and that was the highest one. Um, the highest ranked.
Yeah, it'd be interesting because again, since it was a list along survey, I know that there were different numbers of responses per question. And then, of course, if there are a number of possible initiatives, the number of responses for any one, it would just be good to know.
And what were the alternatives?
Well, there were quite a few. Actually, that, I think you have that data, right? What were the other things that were offered?
It was things like cultural events, training, um, we can show you the list.
Yeah.
Um, while they're putting that online, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, so I was at the presentation the other night. It's very well done. Thank you for doing all of this work and, um, I was struck by two things. One, this sixty-six percent saying they've experienced discrimination in town.
Or seen it.
Right, experienced or seen that was really high and especially in the town businesses, it was sixty-seven percent. And I even asked about that at the meeting. Um, the other thing that struck me though was um, it's hard to put this, but okay, maybe this will help here.
This is about the solutions to
Right. I think, um, a citizen who is answering the survey and sees this list may not really be equipped to know what the best thing to do is, you know, that, so I'm not sure how seriously I would. I see it's number one ranked, but, um, I would, I, it doesn't seem as serious as the sixty-six percent, I think, was a really serious objective, sort of an objective important thing, whereas this is, um, less so. Uh, just because the people who are answering and are not trained like our town manager is to know who to hire and who not to, and so that's, that's the way it hit me anyway.
But I mean, isn't it the case that if you don't know about a topic, that what you want to do is hire a professional?
That's, that's right, but I'm not sure that's the right answer is what I'm saying. That's what we always do. Um, and, and maybe we need to, um, take a step back sometimes about, about hiring all the people that we've been hiring.
Did people just have to choose one of these or could you choose as many as you thought applied? So that some people might have chosen five or six.
No, you could choose, make multiple.
They were ranked, they were supposed to be ranked.
Had to rank order.
Yeah, so, so one through eight, what can you put it from one down to number eight?
I have a follow-on comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm a little bit concerned about the town's reliance on surveys, um, for, for
Okay.
For decision-making. Um, I think, first of all, um, designing a survey that's objective is very, very difficult to do to get the questions right. Um, so first, that's very, very difficult to do. I know for my career, working years with surveys, I can, we designed surveys to get ideas, but as far as getting information that guide decisions,
Right.
that's a whole other thing. So I'm a little skeptical, not just of this survey, but just in general, the town is overusing surveys. And we shouldn't make the mistake of using that information to guide policy or hiring decisions. That's my opinion. Um, so when I look at this survey, remember, six hundred and twenty-eight people is less than five percent of our registered voters. So that's, that's another problem I have as far as drawing a lot of conclusions. There is a lot of great ideas here. There really is. And, and part of I know the work that you're doing is to get a conversation going. So I think it does get a, and it gets people to think about their own beliefs and values, just like you have to think about your beliefs and values about the people who might disagree with you. So I think it's good that we have this, that we're having this conversation. I'm just reluctant to make a lot of, uh, long-term commitments, um, based on, on a survey.
Well, indeed, I mean, are we, we're not going to, right?
Well, I hear
I mean, in that there, beyond this, there's of course a warrant article, and even the warrant article is not a decision, it's a recommendation.
As long as we decouple those, I'm fine.
Well, I mean, but this is key input. I mean, it's certainly, uh, important to gather six hundred plus points of input, you know?
You know, I think
But it depends on how the question
It was another building block for
Right.
what the commission's recommendations. Remember, we've been meeting for over two years with the public.
Yeah.
We've been getting accounts and individuals coming to us. We, um, uh, looked at best practices from other towns in New England. There are twenty towns that have DEI directors now and more being hired. So this was one more piece. I agree, there's, surveys can be, uh, problematic. But I don't think any of us would say the recommendations has a linear relationship between what was on the survey and what we're recommending.
Do we have, uh, job descriptions of those twenty DEI?
Yes, we do. And we also are lucky that our neighbor, uh, uh, neighboring town of Acton did a highly detailed study with UMass, looking at scope of responsibilities and governance around the role. I mean, it's very detailed work.
Well, in fact, that you're almost pivoting into our second topic, right? I mean, maybe we should. I mean, I don't know if there, is there more discussion about the survey itself? I mean, I think it's an important piece of work. I think it also, uh, we kind of set the goal of having the theme of the town's survey this year be diversity, equity, inclusion. So, I mean, I, I think job done, um, and, uh, very hats off.
There's the eighty-five percent.
Any more questions about this, about the survey then, or should we discuss, uh, Article ten?
I'd say so. Let's go for it.
Okay. Do you have, uh, Article ten handy? It's in that email that I sent. So this is a citizen petition filed by Tanya. I don't know, Tanya, if you, am I allowed to invite her to speak?
Up to the chair.
Yeah, I mean, she could speak to this because of, yeah, she is the petitioner.
Okay, go ahead, Tanya, if you want to say something.
Thank you. It was really about the comment about the survey that, um, I just wanted to remind you that when the long-range plan was done with a highly paid, overly highly paid, in my opinion, consultant, the survey had only four hundred something responses and it was highly biased. And we still go by that survey and its results. So I, this survey was pretty comprehensive. I took it. And, you know, with much more limited resources, we got six hundred something responses. So, yes, I know surveys can be biased, but I think this one really deserves respect. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so Article ten has been reworded, uh, since the last version, I think you saw, or maybe it was the Finance Committee. And it really moves that the select board, uh, prioritizes collaboration with the DEI commission to hi, toward hiring a full-time DEI director. We, we think we think it's a good idea. We think it's complicated set of challenges. Um, uh, and certainly more than we feel we can do just as, on a volunteer basis as a commission. And we think that this would accelerate progress towards improving DEI in the town. So that's the, that's the article. Um, we wanted to remind everyone of the goal, uh, discussed earlier, set, set by you all. This is, you know, for, for attendees to know about. Um, we wanted to briefly remind people of the work of the commission and the timeline and when it started and the, the work that uh, the town manager has done in hiring consultants, uh, give people a sense that there's a lot going on. Um, the headlines from the survey that we've just gone through. Um,
Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's apparently linked media or something that's causing problems in this presentation. I don't know. I think if you just hit block or enable it, it'll just go away.
Media. And I think the next one might be a motion again, or is it the next steps? There's only about two more slides in it.
Yeah, there's something, something to the way. Yeah.
We've got the slides. We've got
There we go.
Case for a DEI director, uh, significant work needs to be done. Um, what they would do. Um, and, and we're in good company with, with many other towns moving in this direction. Uh, high-level goals, uh, Henry, we do have a detailed job description, but we wanted to just say, here are the, the six major things we would see the DEI director doing. Um, developing and implementing measures, uh, making sure we have equitable policies, procedures and processes in town. Creating a system to collect, analyze and address, uh, reports, um, of, of bias. Uh, strengthening town government's community connections, increasing diversity engagement of residents and local government, and then increasing the diversity of the town's workforce. And that's consistent with the, the other scope and job descriptions that we, that we looked at. And then specifically asking the select board to support the creation of a job description for the DEI director reporting directly to the town manager and gain approval from the personnel board.
Can you speak to the reporting relationship?
Again, this was just something that we, we saw in, in the other towns and other job descriptions that um, I, I can't remember, Carrie, at some meeting, someone said, why do we need a DEI director when, uh, people can simply come to Carrie with, uh,
And my eyes popped out of my head, yeah.
So this would be somebody to work closely with you, but to take some of the incoming, uh, off of your plate is the idea.
So do these other towns, um, all, if you know, you might not know, all have their DEI director reporting directly to their town manager? Or are some of them maybe part of their HR department or?
Um, we saw several that were reporting straight to the town manager.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sometimes the town manager is the chair or a member of the equivalent of the DEI commission.
Hmm.
Um, that was another way to, you know, tighten the links there. And I think all that's up for discussion. The motions are just asking like, let's
Let's work on this.
Accelerate it.
How, how much of this work do you think could be done by a consultant?
As opposed to Consultant is a great way to get a running start. But I think part of this is about building long-term relationships in the community and being a member of the community and a trusted res, resource. And I think that's hard for a consultant to do. I'm very glad we have a consultant now who's helping to move this forward.
I mean, I, I think there's a difference in sort of identity. Uh, I don't think that, do we name the consultant that they're working with? But if we had a DEI director, we probably would be able to.
And also I think, uh, Mary, the capacity building activities that like an in-house person would carry out does not compare to the work of a consultant who usually comes in, does something very specific, like, you know, in a very, a very limited scope and then, you know, leaves. Um, so I would keep recommending, because we have since December, to get, you know, like a DEI director that can oversee the development and implementation of the DEI-related activities in the town of Concord.
What, what is the scope of the work that you're hoping to accomplish?
When we get back to that.
Yeah.
Is it town staff? Is it town staffing committees? Is it?
That's one, yeah.
What, so what is the scope?
So this is a summary and we have a lot more detail.
I was gonna say, the details behind are probably pretty important because I don't, I can't understand what the first one really would be. If you give me some, for instances.
Well, you know, I, I think the spirit of that one is in the same way that you set quantifiable goals for the select board and then you measured yourself against it. That's the idea here. You know, we, we don't have quantifiable goals other than nobody likes the sixty-six percent result on the survey. But how many cultural events would we want to do? How many trainings? Which departments would happen? You know, there's really no roadmap of quantifiable goals around DEI.
Right, and then try to achieve better measures in the future.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the thought of the survey is that it would be run, uh, it'd be launched two null, so we would run, run it again in two years, see if we saw improvement in any of the metrics.
Are, are a lot of these things, things that the committee itself could do?
Um, I don't think so. I think it's too much ground to cover and when we're not experts either.
Well, it's actually kind of, uh, a miracle, I was, would say that the survey got done. I mean, normally it wouldn't have been. Um, in this case, uh, and it just by chance, we were able to achieve that, which is great, but, um, I, I think it is difficult to move some of these things down the road. Yeah.
Yeah. So how would you measure success? You said earlier, measure success, the metrics, how would you measure the success of this person?
I think that the quality and inclusion in, in the town improves.
But how would you measure that?
I, I think the survey numbers would be something to, to watch. I think right now, if you look at this third one, uh, analyzing, um, analyzing incidents, we don't have formal numbers. We, we all receive informal reports. Uh, Town of Belmont has a detailed report they do every year on, this is how many racial biases we had, here's how we resolve them, uh, it's transparent.
So you have a reporting system?
Yeah, they do.
So would we need a reporting system in order?
That's what we're recommending.
It's one of the gaps.
So I wanted to, um, comment on, um, for, for the DEI commission and for the public, why some of us are asking some difficult questions and playing devil's advocate. There is no doubt that we have a problem and we need to address it. And, um, your survey is definitely showing that, and we, we all pretty much know that anyway. Um, but, uh, the pushback from my point of view really doesn't have to do with DEI. It has to do with, um, just the need for us to start looking fiscally at being a lot more careful about our hires because in the last few years, the town has hired ten or twelve more full-time staff. And it's just not we just, we're, we're gonna run out of money. That's basically, so we're just trying to look ahead a little bit, like as Matt said, um, um, when we see a problem, we hire a professional. So we've done that in the past few years with Sustainability Director, Economic Vitality Director, I could go on the whole list of them. And so it's just unfortunate that unfortunate that DEI is coming at this time when we've all of a sudden realized, wait a minute, we can't keep hiring this many people. We just can't afford it anymore. So that is where my pushback is coming from. But even though I think DEI is a really important issue and we need to work on it, I'm just not sure if we can have a full-time director.
Well, I think this is why town meeting is going to be very interesting.
That's right.
I'll tell you, we we as a group of us marched in the parade at Patriots Day, and there was a powerful support for us out there. It felt like a lot of people care about this and we're grateful to see citizens standing there with a banner for this. So I don't know how the vote's gonna go in town meeting.
You had a big crowd in the parade. It was pretty impressive. The the problem isn't when people vote to do something, they are not at the same time voting to pay for it. And so you can ask people what they want to do.
Yeah.
And then the question is, let's have somebody else pay for it.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, can I, can I, I agree with what Terry said, but we definitely have a problem in town. And at the end of your, um, presentation last week, one of the commenters made a comment that she thought the reason why we didn't have diversity in town is because of housing. And it the select board's job is our, one of our jobs is to look for synergies among different interest groups within town. And to me, that's a perfect synergy.
Yeah.
Housing and diversity, right?
Totally agree with that.
So when I look at the limited resources that we have and the fiscal constraints that we're under, given some of the capital improvements we're making in town, I'm wondering if putting money into more affordable housing would go further towards achieving some of our diversity goals. That's that's what, you know, because these are, we have to make trade-offs when we, when we spend more money, we need to make trade-offs. So what is the trade-off we make for this? And is there a better way to spend money to create a synergy? Um, and I personally, that whoever that woman was, and I've forgotten her name, I thought she just nailed it as far as, um, housing um, being one of the most practical and effective ways to bring more diversity into our town. So that's where, that's what I'm struggling with.
So I I would like to say something, um, regarding Terry's and and Mary's comments. Um, I cannot believe, you know, like any organization or business or corporation, let alone, let alone a town not doing, you know, and being super serious about diversity and inclusion, um, at this point in like twenty twenty-three, um, when we talk about priorities and budget, this should be up there. Um, it is, um, I, and it is our job as commission members, because that's why, you know, there's a commission so that we can make recommendations and help out, uh, to, um, you know, get information together, in inform you, create the survey, do other types of activities that will enable, um, you know, and facilitate these type of of like decision-making, like evidence-based decision-making on on, it's already hard to prioritize, but really diversity and inclusion, I could not, you know, be more, uh, serious about, like, just we need to take it serious. It's it's really very, like, I I would not advise the Town of Concord or any other Concord or organization or a business to think about it in two years. Uh, or to just, you know, do a little tiny bit and then, um, start working on it again later on. It's it's, I think it's something that we need to to he- like, you know, to to work on right now and and.
I think we agree with you. I think where we're where we're struggling is what's the best way to do that? I think that's what we're, so I think we we agree.
Well, I think what's helpful about Article Ten is it's been rephrased is it's in fact not the end of that journey. It's the next step in the journey. And so it really gives us, uh, uh, I I would, I interpret it as more or less a year to work out what is the right model. Um, because it doesn't, uh, absolutely state anything. It's really about how can we get that DI directorship done? And it may be, I I mean, I I suggested before, it may be an expansion of the scope of our regional housing services office to incorporate DEI goals and and maybe have multiple, uh, staff, but that are serving multiple communities or you know, you know, there are lots of models that might work. And we need to collaborate and try to, I mean, that's what the the article is saying, is to collaborate and and to try to, uh, aim towards that goal under the conditions that we're at, which is fiscal restraint. And, you know, it may involve organizational redesign. It may, you know, it within the town. Um, it it's lots of things.
Right. So, um, this one slide, where you say to support the creation of job description for a DEI director reporting to the town manager. Um, it may turn out, for example, that we join with another town or two towns, because no one town can afford the other, the towns that you've listed that have them already are are mostly bigger than Concord and a lot bigger, like Lexington has, I think, thirty-seven thousand people, whatever. So if we had to join with, I don't know, Carlisle or or a couple other towns, then that person would be reporting to all of those different town managers. So I'm not sure that it should be this specific, you know, that it has to.
But the article doesn't state that.
No, no, it doesn't.
Right. So that.
Well, it says full-time, though.
This, the article says that we're moving towards hiring a full-time DEI director. That's pretty clear. So it's not, let's think about what's the best way to improve diversity.
That's true.
The article is specific.
Yeah.
Then I saw someplace a a specific timeline. And I, it's not in these slides.
It was in the presentations.
That was retrospective. That was the past.
And it did, I mean, the the last item in the timeline was to enter into a contract with somebody.
I think it was in, uh, six to nine months or something.
Oh, no, no, that's March of twenty-three. The town contracted a consultant.
Consultant, which we have done.
Right.
Yeah.
But in the presentation that you made about the survey, I thought you had a timeline there to when you saw some, you had near short-term goals and then three to six months or something like that, right?
Oh, yeah.
That was drafted. I mean, commission's job is to focus on this and to.
I may, I I I worded the article. You finally say something.
So go to Tanya. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Like you said, Matt, it is about collaborating with the select board in defining what the DI director does and doesn't do. And and the slide about the future was taken down precisely because it's now a collaboration and an ongoing pro expedite and do it by such and such date or anything, which was never the intent in the first place in terms of setting a date. Otherwise, it would have been in the article itself. Uh, you were talking about, uh, trying to equate this pretty much with housing, and I think that's a huge mistake. Housing is part of the issue, sure, but it's not, this is not about a housing issue. We have so many committees dealing with housing, uh, as well as the regional. Um, in the, in the forum that was held on March twenty-second, our, one of our state reps, Carmen Gentile, talked about how he found out that black families moved to Concord, which means they afforded whatever they afforded and moved, some of them wealthy, some of them not, whatever, but then they moved out. There is a lot of, uh, other discrimination going on in town that has to do with inclusion and equity. And so it's not at all entirely about housing. And, um, the other thing I want to point out that the reason I moved ahead filing this article in the first place, and I have said this, and that is in itself an an issue of equity. I didn't know enough at the time about the details of the commission's work, but I knew they were very upset that their needs weren't being adequately met. And I suggested this approach to bring it to town meeting. And for me, this is very much an issue of equity in terms of uh, finding the money to find this position as 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 well as the, you know, as much as the others, to somehow sacrifice from something else in order to give this, uh, the attention it deserves. That's what equity is about. Uh, so, um, I just want to express those.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
And, um, so we will be deliberating on Article Ten later on in the meeting. Um, at this point, I think we've gotten it, unless you had other topic, I think we've gotten the update, and I think town meeting will be interesting to see, uh, the response to Article Ten. Um, any other points before we move on? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item of business is to meet with our town moderator to discuss the time of quote, no new business unquote, for the annual town meeting on Monday or on Sunday.
So so you have, um, moved things around?
Why?
Oh, I I might have an old agenda, but we had.
Oh, while the public-private partnership agreement, we got a note from the town manager earlier today saying that she was asking us to uh, continue the discussion to a future.
And then we have the statements and taking warrant positions and then the end. So I don't know if this is out of order.
No, you're right, Terry. We're supposed to review the statements that.
First?
Well, before the.
Okay, well, I did see Carmen is on the, on the zoom, and it probably be better. I I I was hoping she would go first.
Yeah, I think so.
That's fine. That's fine. Just come back to that.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize the order.
That's okay.
Uh, so I see the moderator, Madam Moderator.
Good evening.
Hi. So could you, uh, queue up the discussion for us here?
Certainly. Um, traditionally, the select board has chosen a time uh, that it moves after which to take up new, no new business on the first night of, uh, town meeting. And, uh, uh, my hope and expectation is that with a relatively longer session on Sunday, we will be, we won't be able to conclude the meeting on Sunday, I don't believe, but we should be able to conclude it with a single session uh, beginning at seven PM on the following, uh, day, Monday evening. Uh, so the question is, what time would you like to move, uh, that we take no bit, no new business up after? And I will tell you, uh, I believe that last year, we the select board moved for no new business to be taken up after five-thirty on Sunday. I could be wrong about that, but that's my memory. Uh, and I know that I've heard from the head teller that if it were to go to six o'clock, if six o'clock were the time after which we took up no new business, he would have a little more trouble persuading tellers to stay for that whole time, one o'clock to, uh, to.
Five-thirty sounds really good.
Yeah.
I think it worked really well last year.
I agree.
I remember we were debating, should it be five or six? And I think we came out with five-thirty and whatever we did last year worked really well.
Well, but I do have one little worry, and and that's what, uh, the town manager had informed me that there is no, uh, provision for us to actually have any meeting on Tuesday night as things stand right now. So if, you know, if we end at five-thirty or end taking new business at five-thirty on Sunday, we are then committed to stay as long as it takes on Monday. And I don't know, y- of course, it's, it's, uh, all a matter of, uh, taking bets, uh, as to how long that will take. I don't know. What's your best bet, Carmen?
Well, um, uh, you know, I think the most helpful thing is is to look at how many articles we have on the consent calendar, uh, many articles on which we expect there to be no motion. And that leaves us with the number of articles we expect to take up for full deliberation. And then one can plug in an average number, say fifteen minutes. Some articles will take shorter than that, some will take significantly longer than that, and you can kind of do a a guesstimate. Uh, I went through that exercise and it suggested to me that if we adjourned the meeting on Sunday at six o'clock, that we would be able to finish at a reasonable hour on on Monday. And, um, and when I say adjourn the meeting, that means whatever we have taken up at five-thirty is the last thing, we're done with it by six o'clock. And, you know, we can never guarantee that, but, um, there's a reasonable expectation.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, we have a few articles that, um, are attracting uh, attention and, uh, generating feelings in town. And when that happens, we do tend to have longer discussions at town meeting. So, um, there's never a guarantee.
Yeah, but what I've been encouraged by, I think, this year is that there have been a number of articles where the motion has been adjusted in response to feedback or where articles that had been proposed that were controversial will not be moved. And in both of those cases, I think, you know, we will have the chance of shortening the meeting and I I it does seem like we're headed in that direction this time.
I would concur.
Um, so any, any objections to setting five-thirty is the?
Nope.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Hey, move to approve five-thirty PM as the time of no new business at annual town meeting on Sunday, May first. I mean, um, April thirtieth.
Second.
Um, roll call vote, please.
Oh, yes. Um, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye.
All right. Thank you very much. This actually might be as good a time as any to note that, uh, I think we should have a meeting before uh, town meeting on Sunday, uh, at, and I think the time that we're proposing is twelve fifteen. Um, and lunch will be provided.
Oh, wow.
To the select board members.
So I'm going to be in a big room.
Um, and so, uh, you know, we we actually do already have a couple of administrative business, uh, items that will be thrown in front of us as well as some appointments, but the main point of having the meeting is to discuss any last-minute, uh, motion, changes, uh, or changes in the uh, positions. And then also, since we are only going to be taking positions on a few of the articles perhaps tonight, uh, any new statements that are being proposed to be read on behalf of the select board.
What time was that?
Twelve fifteen.
And where is that?
Uh, tentatively, the cafeteria.
So not where we met last year, upstairs?
Not if you're having food.
Okay, okay, cafeteria.
And then, you know, we would continue in session in the in the select, in the town meeting. Okay?
And we need to get that posted then.
Oh, yeah. Then we have time for that.
Okay.
I I saw a draft agenda today and, um, looked in good order to me, so. Um, all right. Uh, the next thing is actually select board statements and taking positions on the remaining warrant articles. Uh, so, uh, handout, in your handout today, I see, uh, there's a, uh, statements on Articles five and twenty-three, and I thought I saw another one here. Where is it?
Yeah, and.
Where's the one that Mary brought up?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. I s- I.
It was five. I saw it somewhere.
And I see.
Well, she sent it to us.
Yeah, it came in by email.
And there were four of them, and then Linda, Linda had one for the CPC article.
Right. I saw an email with Linda's and Mary's and mine and.
Right. I saw wildly two are printed out here.
I only have one printed out.
Yeah, I only have.
Well, there's two sides of a sheet.
Oh.
Five and twenty-three. Well, I think I can probably bring them up on the screen so we can.
I only have one there. Mine is not double-sided.
Mine, too. I have one copy of.
Well, we can look, we'll look on the screen.
Look on the screen.
Yeah, all right.
Because there's also some other ones that we don't have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would it be helpful if I, uh, told you who I have from the coordination meeting, which articles I have the select board speaking on according to my list?
I have a presentation, actually. I have a presentation, actually, uh, a single slot on that point.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
But let's make sure it matches.
That we're matching.
Yeah.
All right.
Carmen, don't, don't leave.
Yeah, let me just show you what I've got here. Share screen. There we go. Okay. So I've got Terry speaking on Article five, and we certainly have that statement here. Article ten, it looks like it will be moved. Uh, we had a question about that last time. And I have written a draft statement, but it depends upon how we vote, and so I haven't distributed that. Um, Henry's been set as the CPS budget, but he's been uh debating whether he should be the presenter. And that depends upon whether, Terry, do you have any change in position that you're expecting?
Um.
Do we, do we need to reconsider Article seventeen based upon?
Want to ask Linda because she wasn't here to vote. I was thinking when we get to that article, but uh, so far I don't, but we've received a lot of new financial information today, so.
Right.
Um.
So you would like to review that?
Yeah, I really don't know. It depends on Linda and the financial.
All right, and then Article nineteen does not look like it's going to be moved, but we'll see. And if it is, then I will write a draft statement and on Sunday we would review it. Uh, Article twenty-two, the solar generation task force, I don't believe we received a, uh, well, I don't think we've, we haven't voted on this one yet, right?
We haven't.
We haven't voted on it, so depending upon how we vote, Mary would write a statement. Then Article twenty-three, I have distributed a statement. Article twenty-six, Linda's distributed a statement. Article thirty-four, we have not assigned a speaker and we may not need to. Um, what I've suggested is following that Jennifer Shuneman of the Economic Vitality Committee uh, make a uh statement.
Right.
Because I believe really, besides the uh Planning Board, it's really an economic vitality.
Yes.
Uh, discussion.
That's a great idea.
Okay, so then we would not have a speaker on that article. And then finally, for Article thirty-seven, uh, the leafbauer petition article, Mary has distributed a statement. Um, then for Article twenty-five, there were two different strategies that I heard. One was under hearing reports, under Article two, whether there would be a report made of, from the Concord two fifty or if the moderator allowed for it, that there would be a brief statement made in lieu of of a motion.
We've resolved that.
And so what's the answer?
I've been, the moderator and I have uh discussed this and um there will be no presentation other than by announcing that um what we're going to do and that there will be a handout on the table.
Okay.
For people to to look at, to uh explain the approach that we've taken to funding.
Okay.
Two hundred and fiftieth.
So the what we are going to do means we're, you're not going to move the article. And you're going to get used to our funds or, yeah. Okay.
And you're going to speak?
It's just speak to let people know that that we're not moving the article and that the and the information is available in the handout.
Great, good, thank you.
All right, if you write up those remarks, it'd be great if you would share them uh for Sunday's meeting.
And and the only. As long as what I just said.
Well, of course, but that's always helpful.
That's okay.
And um, we haven't taken a position yet on Article forty-three.
That's right, but we wouldn't have a speaker on Article forty-three.
Probably not, but let's see what happens.
Okay. All right. Um, so does that match your list, uh, Carmen?
Mr. Chairman, it does.
Yay.
Good, thank you.
Great.
Very good.
All right, so now let's get into it. Um, as far as Article five is concerned, let me see if I can uh pull that up on the screen. The statement, the draft statement. Lot of. Okay, draft statements. What was funny is it was all one file. Um.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why I can't understand why we only have some of the statements. All right, here we go. Uh.
I know.
All right. Hopefully, people are able to see that. So Article five. Um, do you want to speak to this, Terry? I mean, here it is, it's just talking about the.
Right, um, it's going to be very brief, thanking everybody, saying, you know, this is long overdue and it's a very equitable plan and competitive with the market and that's it. We urge your support.
I think it's great.
Okay.
I do.
Good.
And I checked with Amy and she helped me uh reword this. I took out the whole thing about the eighty-five percent. It was too confusing and made it simpler.
Okay, so the next statement that is available is Article twenty-three. Um, and uh, I wrote that we recommend affirmative action, that the specialized stress energy code supports our climate action plan goals. It's also aligned with something we did in twenty twenty-one, the fossil fuel-free infrastructure. Um, and that while we look forward to participating in the state's pilot project, that adopting this code will achieve maybe the same objectives. And for sure, and regardless.
Yep, looks good.
Yep, looks good.
All right, uh, then uh, Linda, your statement on, I think it's Article twenty-six.
Is twenty-six going to be on the consent agenda?
Oh.
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I understood that it was going to be on the consent agenda.
Too. I thought so too.
And that this was just a backup and that, and that um, Matt, if it would be either you or I who would read this.
Right, depending upon if you could attend.
That's what I remember, but.
Uh, I see Diane Proctor, the chair of the CPC, has her hand up.
It's not showing as consent.
Yeah, I don't think it's on the consent agenda.
Oh, wow.
Or consent calendar, excuse me.
Twenty-seven.
My, my understanding is that twenty-six is on the the consent calendar. And. Okay, that was my understanding and and my, I was, I'm prepared to speak to it if we need to. But my understanding was that that it was on the consent calendars.
Well, and and we're prepared to speak to it if we need to as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
I don't have it written for consent calendar. Can we just check with Carmen?
Yeah, it's not showing in the FinCom report as on the consent.
Yeah, I don't have it marked.
Uh, yeah, no, Article twenty-six is not on the consent calendar. Uh, Articles, um, it's confusing this year because there are three community preservation articles. And Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight are on the consent calendar, but Articles twenty-six is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but uh, so now taking us back to this draft statement.
This is just, I apologize, Matt. So this is Article, I don't have my my warrant sitting in front of me.
The appropriation recommendations.
Oh, my gosh, no, that would not be on the consent calendar. I thought it was the other.
I didn't think it normally would be.
Oh, this is plain old.
Plain old. Well, not plain old, this is two million bucks.
No, but it's, it's the normal, okay, okay, I, okay.
This is elegant, elegant and positive presentation. Bye.
Yeah, well, and and it's also a uh very nice uh supporting statement, so I think.
It's great. It's great.
All set with that.
All good projects, thank you.
Now, Article thirty-seven, um, leaf lowers. Um, now, I thought we had a vote of three to one.
We did, but it changed. The article changed.
Oh, yeah, so we may want to reconsider. So maybe we should hold this one in abeyance until we uh have a chance to look again.
Okay, that's fine.
So what happens to the ones that we don't have statements for yet?
Well, so that's, I think, first of all, we deliberate as many as we can tonight.
Right.
And depending upon the outcome of those deliberations, then we uh review statements at a meeting on Sunday.
Okay.
Good, that sounds good.
All right, uh, so Article ten, we just had a lengthy discussion. And I think that we need to come to a board position on this article.
This is hard.
So, um, my sense is that, you know, in spite of the uh difficult fiscal situation, that it's worth continuing to work towards this as an objective. And I think we just need to get creative uh in terms of how do we either look at organizational design to support such a position? How do we look at, you know, in in terms of uh other roles? Um, that how do we look at, as we'd said, regionalization models? I understand that, you know, those things may not fully achieve the goals of the D E I Commission, but we, the idea of collaboration is a two-way street. You've got to figure stuff out and working with the town manager. So I I would like to give a positive signal through this that we are seeking to collaborate. And in fact, you know, if you look at the wording of the article, it it's pretty close in most respects to our goals um statement.
Right, I think um if you took out the word full time, you would definitely be able to accommodate these other models. Um, like, like if we joined with another town, for example, there's a regional Board of Health kind of initiative right now. So if we had, I I don't know what kind of creative.
Regional Housing Services Office, we spend more than a full-time head equivalent. We don't have any full-time.
No, we don't.
I believe we grand total spend for our Regional Housing Services Office.
No, no, that's because we're the host community, we've taken all.
There's the in-kind, okay.
We only pay like thirty something thousand.
You're right.
No, I think it's more than that.
No.
Eighty-five.
I I don't know without looking it up.
Okay, well, anyway.
I, I think Terry's right as far as it's, because remember, there are how many towns in that regional services office that absorb those costs? So we've got a lot of towns to spread that. So I think Terry's right, it's not, it's not the same as an equivalent um full-time person.
It's only one model. We don't know what we're going to do yet.
Right.
But um.
Well, one other approach potentially would be, of course, to try to amend the article.
Right, but it's only advisory, so.
Uh, just to encourage and just to encourage and facilitate, that doesn't mean that it's going to dictate in case of their outcome.
No, but.
I think we should indicate that we want, that this is an important goal.
Right.
We want to work on it in creative ways. For example, like you said, maybe we can reorganize something else in town or work with other towns or whatever. We don't know the answer yet, but that we're willing to collaborate and work hard on this goal because it's a very important goal. And we don't know yet how exactly we're going to get to that point.
I would support that.
Is the concern adding any F T E or um, you know, if there was an opportunity, we have, you know, we're always, the organization is always changing. We're always looking at how we can maximize if, if we could fit this inside the current F T E count, is that it is the board.
That's what I mean by organizational design.
That's what I want, yes.
Yes.
It's, it's just, it could be any F T E that is.
That's right.
It doesn't have to be incremental.
Has to be a fairly highly.
No, no, but I mean, it would be if we were asking for another police officer, you would be, it would be.
Right, or another high-level administrative position or something.
So I I guess I would like to see the select board recommend favorable action on this motion. I think the motion is about as um advisory as it could be. It's very hard to start making commitments to F Y twenty-five spending when we're, we're still working through F Y twenty-four, as we'll talk about later this evening.
Yeah.
Um, we do have the seventy-five thousand dollars that is in the budget. We do have a working relationship with a consultant that we have been working with internally, who started working with the commission. The commission, um, based on the feedback that I'm receiving, they're very happy with this consultant. They would like to consider um, or continue the relationship. The next phase of the work would be developing a roadmap or a strategic uh plan for how to advance D E I initiatives. The, the consultant has said to me, and I I believe to the commission as well, that it's, it's too soon to be hiring somebody right now. We need the roadmap and we need to clearly define what we're trying to do. It doesn't mean that we won't be there for fiscal twenty-five, but I I do think it's important for this board to support the motion as it's, as it's presented, because it's, it's one of your goals. And again, it's, it's about as advisory. It, to me, it would be hard for you not to support it in its current form.
That's convincing. And also, I like, Matt, what you said about sending a positive message to this committee, this commission that's done all this work.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think it's appropriate.
So are we ready to uh? Vote? Okay.
Okay, motion to support, uh, recommend um affirmative action on Article ten.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Miss Escobedo.
Aye.
Miss Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Miss Ackerman, aye.
Okay, so um, then I can uh bring up the uh statement that I wrote. I just needed to make a one-word change because of the vote. Okay, so um, I said here that the select board unanimously supports affirmative action, uh, recommends affirmative action on Article ten. Um, that Concord needs a, to become a more diverse, equitable inclusion commu- inclusive community to thrive in a rapidly changing world, and that we set a goal around that this year that the D E I commissions labor diligently to raise awareness, but as they've noted, we need more than volunteer efforts to become a truly welcoming town. Need to make sustained investments in training processes, programs and personnel. Challenge is how to fund this uh when both spending and headcount are under intense pressure. I note that we have money in the budget for twenty twenty-four. Uh, but it's, and it's not enough to support a position, but it'll help us formalize our efforts. And um, that we're committed to collaborating with the D I Commission and the town manager this next year to prepare for staffing at F Y twenty.
Perfect.
Wonderful.
Well, um, it looks like there's one typo or something. I can't quite.
Well, I just, uh, we had uh two sentences and I just made it one sentence. So I just changed capital to lowercase and put it in brackets. That's all.
Great.
That's all. It's just.
Okay, I can't quite.
It doesn't matter.
Whatever.
Doesn't matter.
It looks like a great statement. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Great. So now, uh, what's the next article that we need to deliberate on?
Well, um, I guess seventeen.
Okay.
So, Matt, you asked me if I want to reconsider, so.
This is the public school uh operation.
So let me just say, I don't, at this time, I'm not prepared to make a motion to reconsider. But I definitely want to know from Linda. Um, because Linda, we took a position on a number of articles. I think it was April third or the end of March, and you were unable to be here, and this is a really important article. And I'm just wondering if you wanted a chance to be able to vote on this article. That was one of my reasons for reconsidering. My other reason is some new financial data that we've gotten yesterday and today that I haven't had a chance to really look at yet, but Carrie's going to present and and Gail, so I may later move for reconsideration. But I'm not prepared to do that right now. But just the first reason, Linda, do you want to have a chance?
Yeah, Terry, you're making reference to the fact that I missed a meeting. I'm not aware that I have missed a meeting.
Yes. The, the meeting we vote, the night we voted for on this article.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think you had a chance, Linda, to vote on this article.
What, what night was?
Meeting.
Hmm, what night was that?
Gosh.
I'm guessing it was April third. It might have been the last meeting in March.
Twenty-seven.
Huh.
Do you remember voting on this, Linda?
Um.
On the CPS budget?
We only have four votes recorded.
Yeah, it is. March twentieth, actually, it was March twentieth. Yeah, it is. March twentieth, actually. It was March twentieth.
Okay, so that's possible. Thank you. That's possible. I was, yeah, okay, that makes sense. I probably was not there.
So I felt that it was a really important article and that you might want a chance to vote on it.
Um, well, you know, as you've already pointed out, there's all this new information that just came down this afternoon or today sometime.
Can we just hear that now?
Yeah.
Maybe that's
And isn't FinCom meeting again this week to revisit this? Or the school committee, school committee is meeting to um tomorrow night, isn't it? To revisit?
No, but not, not
Committee is not changing their position.
Not on the CP, not on the operating budget. No.
But what about FinCom? Are they going to look at this new financial information?
No, I don't think that they have any plan to.
Okay, okay.
All right. I don't think that, you know, anybody else had any sort of concerns about the relative budgets. I think that was an issue that you had personally raised and
Yeah, you were talking about those pie charts that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right.
So um, maybe, I don't know, Gail, would you present that I think that we had these cost center budgets that were distributed to us today. Right? And I think that the the underlying question here is over time, has the proportion of spending of the overall town trended more towards the schools or more towards the town side of operations? That's that's the nature of your question.
One of the big questions. There's several big questions, but that's one of them.
And my sense was that while it's remained quite stable, actually, that if anything, the town's portion of the budget has increased. Now, I think that the latest thing that we got today, though, shows that that's only temporary. That uh, come twenty twenty-six, fiscal twenty twenty-six, when the middle school debt fully comes online, then we're gonna see a shift back to higher year-over-year spending. Now, again, it's just debt service in this case.
That's the stuff I haven't really
It's gonna be on the school side of the
Right.
But again, you know, I think that it's a kind of a unique perspective. I mean, that really, we're looking at budgets in terms of, okay, how much are people spending on stuff that needs to get done? As opposed to, well, you know, how how much is the boat leaning this way versus that way?
Yeah. Well, isn't the question, there was six hundred thousand dollars unexpended in the last fiscal year that is to be carried over. And then five hundred thousand some odd that was not counted correctly and therefore is also available. So my question is
No, the opposite. There was a, there was a guideline mistake where they thought they had more money in the guideline than they did.
Can we let them present?
You're both, both happened. This is, okay, this is getting out of
Come to
Are you ready to present?
I'm I'm happy to. Where where do you, where should I start? Do you want, do you want to start with with Article nine, with the with the town budget?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to look at it.
Okay.
I mean, not that Article nine is in suspense of us, you know, not proposing affirmative action, as far as I understand it. I know, but now the amount is
We already voted on the CPS budget, too.
The the motion will be for less.
Yes. Yeah.
But we don't need to revote it, or maybe we do.
But I I would like the opportunity to at least put this on the table in in the meeting.
Okay.
And um, you know, I'm not expecting that we're gonna have a big discussion about it tonight. The Finance Committee is meeting on Thursday, and Gail and I will be at the Finance Committee meeting. So
So they are talking about it.
Well
The town budget, not the school budget.
Well, that's okay.
Well, we, I mean, just
Talking about Article seventeen.
To to put this issue. So again, I'm I'm talking about the town budget, Article nine. So late, very late last week, Gail, working with the the Guidelines Chair, you know, putting together the presentation for town meeting um, discovered that there was an issue with the starting point for the FinCom guidelines for the town budget. So the starting point for the town budget was overstated by about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, you you may wonder why that happened or how how difficult is it to figure out the starting point? The issue is that the town's guideline budget covers both operating in tier-one capital. And we, there is some flexibility in in any new increment in spending. What can go to operating or what can go to to the tier-one capital? We've talked about this before, about it would be easier, certainly much easier for people to understand if the Guidelines process covered operating budgets and capital was just separate. Um, so there wouldn't be this this co-mingling. There wouldn't be the opportunity on an administrative level to move things around. Um, it it just would make things clearer. So the other complicating factor is the town's recent practice of carrying forward a certain amount of unspent uh, prior year. Um, which just started during the pandemic because the town's budget, the the Finance Committee asked the town to reduce its budget during the pandemic. So it was the first year of the pandemic, fiscal twenty-one, first full year. The town's budget was reduced by about two point four percent. And that was so that essentially the schools' budgets could be kept harmless. And I mean, it's hard, it's hard to remember what it was like at the beginning of the pandemic, but I remember coming to the Select Board on a pretty regular basis, uh, providing reports on property tax collections, because there was a concern at the beginning of the pandemic that that might even be an issue. And so we didn't want to further burden or overburden the taxpayer. Luckily, that didn't happen, but the town, the town's budget was reduced in one way that we were able to hold services harmless uh, was to carry forward the the unspent funds.
That would normally go to free cash.
That would normally go to free cash. So we're not, we're not capturing a hundred percent of unspent, but you know, probably fifty fifty percent or so we have been practicing. I was hoping that in going into fiscal twenty-four, we we would stop that. Uh, we have limited that. We're just, we're carrying the same six hundred thousand dollars forward because we had identified that for um, implementation of the new class and comp study, which when we put the fiscal twenty-three budget together, we had thought maybe that would happen in fiscal twenty-three. It didn't happen. So it's the if you look at the motion, you will see that the carry forward is not from fiscal twenty-three, it's from fiscal twenty-two. So it's the same. It wasn't spent. It was carried forward into twenty-three. It wasn't spent. We're carrying that same amount forward into twenty-four uh, for implementation of that plan. So it's
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So I think this is one of the questions I sent you. So there's in these charts, there's a percent increase of six point six, five percent um, on the second chart, the second line.
Yep.
So that includes the carry forward from twenty-three into twenty-four. But does it include the carry forward from twenty-two into twenty-three?
It does. I just, I didn't break it out that way, but the
All right.
The fiscal twenty-three appropriated twenty-nine million, seven hundred thirty-five thousand. That includes that six hundred
So you don't have apples and oranges. It is really a six point six percent.
It is. It's it's four, it's four point five three plus the carry forward of six hundred thousand. That small amount for the opioid settlement funds, and that brings it to six point six.
You already included the carry forward also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, we've explained that through the presentations to the Finance Committee. It was explained at the public hearing. It's part of the town meeting presentation.
I I'm gonna uh, recognize our future Select Board member because he's going to have to uh, be involved in the CY twenty-four. Could it, could this, these numbers go on the screen? This question?
Yeah. I do have an actual question, too. Um, the six hundred thousand that you referred to as carry forward from twenty-two to twenty-four, is that part of the tax levy for twenty-four, or is it already collected funds that are simply appropriated within the support?
It's already collected and and re-appropriated.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So the
Question is, yeah, go ahead.
The, so the question is the six hundred thousand dollar carry forward, essentially, is it new money uh, to be included on the tax levy, or is it existing? Um, and it is existing. And it will, it will be re-appropriated. So I'm I'm happy to to put the the spreadsheet up on the screen. I'm I'm not sure how helpful it is to to dive into that, but if that's, if that's what
I I think high level is good.
So
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have apples and oranges. I agree, high level is good.
Yeah. And so it's it's easiest to to just look at it in in the email, and I'm happy to share the email with with anybody who is interested in seeing it. Um.
So what year was the town budget less? Did it have
In fis, in fiscal twenty-one.
Okay.
The other, the other piece that I I thought you were going with is is just this chart here that shows, this has eight years. Um, this is something that I believe is in the budget book. So going back to fiscal seventeen, it shows the percent share of the total budget that is allocated to each of the cost centers. So yeah, I don't think you you can't see my cursor. So you know, it 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 is relatively constant. You can see um the drop in the town. So if you, if you start at fiscal twenty, and I know you can go back to fiscal seventeen and the town, the share of the town budget is is twenty-two point three percent. If you, if you go to fiscal twenty, it's twenty-five point twenty. So fiscal twenty is important because that includes the first, I believe, the first full year of the um the West Concord ambulance. Up until that point, we had operated the second ambulance twelve hours a day versus twenty-four hours a day. So that change was implemented, and that's the year that we had ten FTE added to the organization in various places, um, including the Sustainability Director. So that was, that was a big increase there. Um, if you move forward to fiscal twenty-one, you can see the drop from twenty-five point two to twenty-four point two. That's the equivalent of the town's budget reduction of two point four percent. So obviously, it's a smaller percentage because it's a percent of total spending versus the budget. And then um, and then moving forward.
So the takeaway I get from this chart is that pretty much the town's share of total spending has been pretty stable since FY twenty, FY twenty. The CPS has been pretty stable. CS, um, the high school's gone up a little. Well, that bobbles around a little bit. But there's no, there's not big changes. At least that's what I'm
Right. And you really have to go way back. Like, I went back to, I think, twen- two thousand five, two thousand ten. You know, and you look historically, uh, the schools were a larger total percent of the budget than they are today back then. But that was back then. You know, we had, I think we had a larger school population uh, relative to the town's population. You know, there are lots of potential factors, but um, all just said is it's not the case, and I think that I have heard this sentiment raised before, that the that the schools are, you know, spending more as a percentage of overall town expenses than they used to. And I I don't think you could make that case.
But they are the biggest percent of
They, and that
They are still
Decades.
Okay, but that's another statement that is still
Stable. Yeah.
But it's true that they are the biggest portion.
Absolutely.
Okay. And this is operating, and if we looked at debt, which is what you sent us out later today, um, CPS debt service is by far the largest.
We, so we are showing debt here
Yeah.
to as a
Oh, down there.
As a a percent of total spend, and then the the, what I sent out today was um by, you know, type of debt as as a percent of total spending, and I'm happy to they, well, debt is a, debt is a separate line. So you can see
So
that debt is um, nine point one percent in fiscal twenty-four. Debt service is nine point one percent of total spend. And that is, you know, all types of debt, including assessed debt from
But I guess the point I'm looking at is how much of the budget is the schools versus the town? And out of that nine percent of the total budget, most of that nine percent is the schools.
Yeah, so I can, I can show that. Oh. So this here is um not sure how easy or difficult that is to read, but you can see in in fiscal twenty-four that the total debt service for the town is eleven point nine million of that. Four and a half million is within the levy. And a third, well, I have, I have this um a a third of what is in the levy is for town. And just under five percent is for school. When you go up to the excluded debt, um, seven point, almost seven point four million in fiscal twenty-four. Twenty-five point six, seven percent of that is is for CCRSD, thirty-two percent for CPS. Uh, three, three point four for Minuteman, and just under a percent for the town. Then there was a a request for uh, when the middle school debt is is fully on the tax um bill, what would that look like? So I estimated the earliest time that would happen is probably fiscal twenty-six. And you can see at that point, then um, between the elementary and middle school debt, we are at about fifty percent of our debt is is going towards
Okay.
those schools.
Okay.
Yeah. So the guideline um, variance has no effect on reality. It's just affected what the guideline was. Is that right?
Yes, though, eh, the the budget is being, the budget request is being reduced in order to address that, right?
Yeah, and I'd like to just spend a minute on that because I think it's important.
It's important, right?
Um.
And you said that you don't yet have specifics. You just have categories.
Right. So um, as I mentioned, that, again, the starting point for fiscal twenty-three was about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars higher than it should have been. So when you inflate that for the five percent, which was the town's guideline, that that brings the uh, the overstatement up to five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So because we are less than a week before town meeting, and and we don't have the opportunity to to take a deep dive and and come up with a specific plan, um, what I would propose to do is just take that out of, reduce the the line one, general government by that amount. And then take some period of time to go through the budget and figure out where we can make the adjustments. It's not, it's not all coming out of general government, but to do anything else would be to make assumptions at this point about where it would come, and we haven't had the opportunity to diligently look through the proposal. I did identify um, kind of what I would be looking at, where I would expect that it would come from. Um, and I mentioned two hundred thousand dollars, the the reserve fund. So the Finance Committee has a reserve fund within the town's operating budget. It's part of the town's guideline budget of two hundred thousand dollars. We don't, we don't spend that. We, we almost uh, never go to the Finance Committee. And, you know, under, unless I can come up with proposals elsewhere, we would be looking not to, not to do that again, and just manage any unanticipated expenses within the budget. I'm suggesting two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in vacant positions. Uh, we have, you know, we talked We have, you know, we talk often, we've we've run a pretty consistent 10% vacancy rate. I do think that's going down. We've had more success in filling positions. We have better candidate pools. We have a far more competitive class and comp plan going into place for fiscal 24. But still, we're a big organization. If you have fractions of positions not filled for fractions of time and you add them together, there's there's savings. And so we would have to plan to make sure that we had some amount of savings. And I don't think that that's insurmountable based on what our run rate has been for for vacant positions. And then the remaining 35,000 or so in services or supplies. That is the hardest area because we don't have a lot within the operating budget. We're not proposing to take anything from the tier one capital. The Finance Committee was very, very vocal about the reason for increasing the town's guideline by 5% had a lot to do with the fact that we're trying to build back that tier one capital. So we're not proposing to touch that in any way, shape or form.
But I I would say part of my experience of having reviewed the town warrants for the year is that I believe there are opportunities for savings and that some of them hopefully could be a side effect of the new finance system.
Yeah.
And indeed, to be able to centralize procurement and get better controls over the procurement process, I think there could be significant savings.
Yeah.
Now, I was concerned to hear that the rollout of Moonee's has been delayed. I mean, I thought it was going to happen at the beginning of April. And I guess now it won't happen till the beginning of the fiscal.
Yeah.
But, you know, the sooner we can get that online, I think, the sooner we can start to reap those benefits.
I think from an auditing perspective, we're just as happy to have it at the beginning of the fiscal year. It's it's much easier. We we put a lot of thought and effort into crafting this budget to pulling consolidating. So if if you look at general government, you see big increases there because general government has technology and facilities. And we went through and pulled all of the technology expenses out of individual department budgets.
For your 1T, 2C laptops and
Pulled all of the facilities out as well. And we do expect to see some savings. But this will be the first, 24 will be the first full year that we have consolidated, fully consolidated IT and facilities.
So the reserve fund is not technically in general government. And some of these vacant positions are in other departments. So I'm confused about how you're you're just because we're out of time and it's town meeting, you're going to take it all from general government right now? And then you're going to, I guess, have to move it around later?
Yeah. Yes.
At the end of the year.
And and we would do that through the budget adjustment article at the 2024 annual town meeting. We would keep the Finance Committee informed, keep the Select Board informed. But that would be the plan because we we may find that that we can come up with that somewhere else.
Right. So so I understand about the vacant positions. You don't know what department they're going to come out of yet. But by next April, you'll have a much better sense. But the reserve fund, why aren't you just proposing like three to cut 315,000 from general government and cut the reserve fund?
We've always had an appropriated reserve fund. I really, you know, don't don't feel like I can a few days before town meeting, when we're still working on our presentations, you know, give it the diligence it deserves. I would want to have that conversation with the Finance Committee and that we just don't have a
Right. Okay, so you're saying this is an idea of what may get cut. But you haven't had enough time to really figure out. And you're going to have to play it by ear. And so you're just going to take the 515 from general government for for now. And this is a very broad idea of what might happen. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And it's essentially just an accounting issue. It's not that we have found money that we didn't
I I haven't found a penny of this.
The question isn't that we found, we we have money we didn't expect to have. It's just how was it being accounted for?
No, we lost 500,000.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I don't like
Well, we didn't
It never was there.
Right.
It was never there. We've lost budget appropriation. We have not lost any money.
Right, right, right.
Want that story out there.
You know, one of the things that I've realized by going through this exercise, by looking at, you know, town versus school spending as part of the total budget is I think this year, we're trying to make up for the fact that the town has, you know, actually reduced their budget in some years because to help the schools out during the pandemic. But we do have a lot of opportunities within the town going forward to save money. And I know that you've been working on that. Terry's been working on that, putting together a list, not only to save money, but also to look to generate revenue from some of our economic vitality efforts. So this is kind of an unusual year, I think. But going forward, I will be looking to ways to generate revenue to offset some of the spending and to look for more spending cuts in the town budget.
I think that's going to be a big project for all of us next year and the year after.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're back to Article 17, as far as I know.
Oh, there we are.
Which is not affected by any of this.
So the question is whether anybody's position is affected as a result of the previous information we just heard. And if so, if a reconsideration is required, otherwise, let's move forward.
I haven't changed my position.
I I'm not going to change my position because I think we all need to tighten our belts, all the cost centers. But I'm not sure. I I think if I was Linda, I would, I would want to have a vote. But so I'll ask Linda again. I hate to put you on the spot, but
Just remind me what the vote was.
Three to one.
Three to one that
To recommend, to recommend.
To recommend the guideline number, not the request, the school committee request.
I kind of twisted, but
Yes, I would like to, I would like to vote on that.
Okay.
Would that make it four to one?
Well, no, probably not. But I don't know. So shall we? I mean, first of all, we need to move to reconsider. And then if we, if that passes, we can reconsider. Okay?
I move to reconsider the vote on Article 17.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Okay, so so now the
This is not, this is not, this is just simply whether we're going to reconsider.
Whether we're going to reconsider.
Then
Okay.
And vote on the
All right. Okay. Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Okay, so now we need a motion on Article 17. Does anyone want to propose a motion? I would
I move that we recommend to support the FinCom guideline for the CPS budget.
So affirmative action in the amount of the FinCom guideline?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. So roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Nay.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
So that's four to one now.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So which is the next one?
Well, we have to figure out
Oh, yeah, who's it? Well, so I would suggest that Mr. Dane still is on the hot seat for that one. Because the the article still has this, we still have the same select board position. And you have no other articles that you're delivering statements on.
Okay.
Okay. So shall we?
Okay. The next one is 19. Are we going to wait?
Well, yeah, there's a especially considering that they're likely, they've, what we hear is they're likely not to move it. So
So we'll know on Sunday at 12:15, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I think we'll just create an ad lib statement.
Okay. Number 22. Solar generation test.
Task force. Okay. So I know tentatively Mary is on the hook to write our position on this. However, we need to come to a position.
We do, we do. So CMLB voted three to recommend affirmative action, one abstention, and one person was absent. So that's that's been their vote.
Okay.
And my thinking on this is that I think it's moved to where it could be a much more collaborative effort on the part of a task. I know on the part of the members of the task force and the CMLP to work on this collaboratively. And this is something that the town has been asking for. So I guess I'm feeling more like this is something that, and again, this is an advisory article that it gives the Select Board a lot of room to put together a task force, I think, that would work collaboratively and hopefully make progress on something that is obviously important to the town. So I'm I'm tending towards voting affirmative action.
Well, also, it gives us the authority to write the charge.
Exactly.
Which I think is important. And that if it was focused on, for example, citing as an issue.
Right.
It could be very helpful
Exactly.
In developing the eventual plans. So I I tend to agree with Mary on this.
And I also think that you and the petitioner and CMLP have done a lot of work negotiating. And it will, it's stronger now than it was. And I think it's going to be up to us to make sure it's collaborative. If it's not collaborative in the charge, it's not going to work.
Exactly.
So that's going to be our duty to make sure that we can get it as collaborative as we can.
Right.
So I'm in favor of it.
So are we ready for a vote on this one?
Yep.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Move to support recommend affirmative action on Article 22.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
And Mary is
I'm going to write this, I'll do the writing and I'll bring it to our 12:15 meeting.
Okay, and Article 25 will not be moved. So that brings us to right, he's going to bring statement. Yep. But then Article 34, did we take a vote?
No.
Okay, we did not take a vote on mobile food establishment. Any discussion of this?
I'm in support because I want to go to Winthrop Street 52 days in a row and
No chance. Now the motion is going to be amended to not allow for that.
What, what, who's making the amendment?
The Planning Board is coming forward with a motion
Okay.
That, gosh, does anybody have the wording of the motion? But basically, what it it does is it restricts, you know, residential district use to private events. And, you know, unless there's a, it's a business use and not a conforming business use that's sorry, legal nonconforming. But I'm trying to remember if there were any other major changes, but that was a, that was a substantive change.
So this 52 times a year is not applied
To the
Residential. Okay.
Or or at least you can't do it commercially anyway. Yeah.
And I wanted the the permitting for public waste in the hands of
And actually, there was, they said that we could designate. Select Board or its designate. I believe, I believe there was. Yeah.
They heard you.
Yeah.
Trying to find it. All motions, here we go.
It says, it says affirmative action as printed in the Planning Board's written recommendation report dated April 25. I don't have that.
Oh.
April 25.
That's why would I have that?
Yes, Diane.
Yeah.
Nathan Basdet presented to the Select Board, I mean, to the League of One Voters Committee. And it is, it is, in fact, as you just suggested, Matt.
Okay, I'm I'm actually pulling up the document that I think I got from, yeah. Okay, here we go. I can share this, I believe. So this is the marked up copy of the motion. So here we go. So it's saying that
You make it bigger or?
On private property for private event for the property owner or tenant and their invitees. Okay, that's one change. And then the other is public roadways when previously authorized by the Select Board or their designee. So those are two changes that were proposed. And again, Select Board or their designee may permit additional mobile food establishments on municipal property. So in other words, with the right designee, so those are the two changes.
Great.
All right.
Matt, Matt, this is Linda.
Yeah.
Um, yes. But as Carrie stated, they are meeting tomorrow night and the wording will, they're going to look at it one more time. So
Well, we could, we could vote on it as it stands right now, or we could defer till Sunday. The advantage of voting on it as it stands right now is that we could, well
Lock in
No, actually, we don't need to, actually, we don't need to. Perhaps we're okay.
I I still think, I think we should vote on it.
As it
As it is.
And then if it's
But then somebody, Linda or Carrie or somebody should notify us whether there were any more changes made.
Is this the one you're having Jennifer speak to?
Yes, and that's why I thought that we didn't need a speaker.
Good.
But still, we have a lot to do on Sunday. It'd be really good to vote it now as soon as there's no more changes.
I agree.
Okay.
Or no more
And motion to support Article recommend affirmative action on Article 34 as shown with those changes provided there are that that that's the exact version that's going to town.
All right.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Okay. Now, I see that Article 36 is not to be moved. We voted last time on Article 37 and we reviewed the statement. So now
But we didn't, no, we didn't.
No, we haven't.
We haven't reviewed the statement because we were going to look at it to see if these changes
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
We didn't, we didn't review.
So, yes, let's go back then to the document.
Do you have the final motion?
I, well, I had that marked up version and of course, I just closed it sadly. Okay, here we go. Seven. Okay, here we go. So this, the changes here are use of gas powered handheld leaf blowers on residential property of less than 1.5 acres in size. Okay, is only allowed. So there's any property larger than 1.5 acres is not under not not affected by
Immediately.
By the change. And then no, I believe that's at all by this article. And then and then the dates have been pushed And then and and then the dates have been pushed back from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight for commercial and from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty for residential. And then a definition has been added that I think clarifies that backpack-based leaf blowers would be included.
Right.
Okay, those are the three changes as far as I interpret this.
Twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty for residential?
Yeah.
And back.
So it's very far in the future. I mean, we're talking seven years from now almost.
Okay, and back, what was the part about the backpacks?
That, well, there was some question of whether handheld included backpack-based
Mm-hmm.
leaf blowers and this clarifies that it does.
Okay, and the first change was that if it's larger than one point five acres.
It only applies to properties that are less than one point five acres in size.
Okay.
So in other words, that would tend to exclude many of the municipal properties. It would tend to exclude, of course, residents double A. All that.
So let me just.
DPW did not take a position.
Yeah, that's going to be my question um for the town manager. Um, is this going to be a hardship on the DPW? Um, are they going to have to spend a lot of money on new equipment? Or is this far enough in the future that it's going to work out?
You know, so we had we had the Public Works Director lined up about five times, I think, to come in to talk about this. I I haven't really had an in-depth conversation with him since these new revisions came out. I think the issue is more the availability of equipment, not not is it going to cost more, but that it's just not commercially available. So will will it be at that point in the future? I guess we hope so, but it's right now it's it's not available.
Well, I I was there when the DPW Commission discussed this article and this doesn't really address um DPW at all. So they're kind of exempt from this.
So they're fully fully exempt.
Fully exempt. They're fully exempt from this.
So I see the moderator has her hand up.
Oh, she does. Good.
You like to speak to this?
Uh, yes, I want to concur with um with the Mary Hartman's understanding that uh it is the petitioner's intent uh to have this uh proposed uh bylaw amendment not uh apply to town property. And he has effectively excluded the town uh at least in the short term because I uh, well, let's see, commercial landscape.
Oh, no, I see. I just missed one of the ramifications of his first change, which was it wasn't just about the property being less than one and a half acres in size. It's on residential property. In other words, it's not
Yes.
public or commercial.
That's right. Right.
Okay, so right away.
And I also would like to note, I did have a brief conversation with Town Council about uh the permissibility of a bylaw that drew a distinction in this way to apply to residences and commercial properties, but not to the town. And uh he suggested to me that there is plenty of precedents uh precedent for this and it is not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
I I I, in all fairness, I have to say though that Aaron um at the meeting mentioned that yes, this does not address DPW specifically and they are exempt from any of these regulations. But as more and more commercial people move towards electric, they'll be under pressure from citizens to move.
Well, I hope they are.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So um and then so so they, in other words, they did not issue a statement um for that reason, that it didn't.
Doesn't apply.
It's, yeah, it doesn't apply to them.
So I voted against this article, but I would change my vote now with these new changes. So I mean, it doesn't matter. We had a majority.
Right.
But if you want, I could I'll move for reconsideration because.
Well, does anybody else want to reconsider?
I'm fine.
I think we're fine.
Okay.
I think we've got.
No, we, I think we should. If we're gonna change, if Terry's changing.
Okay, but it won't make it a unanimous decision.
I know, but still.
Okay, all right.
To vote.
All right, um, I move to reconsider Article thirty-seven.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself and Sacrament, aye.
Okay, so now we need a motion for Article thirty-seven.
Okay, motion to recommend affirmative action on Article thirty-seven with these new amendments.
Right, so the emotion, the proposed emotion language, yeah, okay.
Right.
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Escobedo. Um. Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacrament, aye.
Oh, so we do have.
It is unanimous. Great.
Okay, great. Very good.
Hey.
I like it.
All right, so that brings us, I think now what we should do is have the parking meters discussion.
Do you want to look at the statement for this? Do you want to look at the?
Oh, yes. Let's look at the statement. Um.
Hmm, let me bring that up.
Uh, if I can find it.
Oh, yeah. Carmen still have her hand up or um?
Uh, Ms. Reese, do you have your hand up still or is that just lingering from before?
That was a lingering hand. It's now down. Sorry.
Okay, um. Hmm. Just trying to find it. I've I've had too many different files tonight. Um, okay, here we go. All right. Uh, so you do, we'll need to change at least one word in this.
Yep.
Okay, all right. There we are. So, select board recom- uh recommends affirmative action Article thirty-seven, full stop.
Right.
Okay. Uh, implementation dates are reasonable. Um. I don't think you need the final sentence, but other than that, I'd like it.
Okay.
Uh, question, um, should we put in one sentence about um you know, the petitioner worked with various groups and 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 collaborated and and made amendments. So now we're unanimous, or you want to just not bother with?
Well, I think that will be referred to in the debate.
And I I said based on conversations with multiple vendors, because that's where he did a lot of his outreach, was with the commercial.
Yeah, but he he amended his implementation dates. And maybe that's an important, not a non-important detail. Maybe we don't care, but.
She does say that the dates seem are reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, never mind. It's too much detail.
Okay, so, good. Um, so now let's move to the parking meters discussion. And then we'll come back to the consideration of Article forty-three and we'll be done with that.
All right, so um the article is requesting an annual appropriation for the parking meter program in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. I think the best way to think about that is a maximum expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars and we can't spend more than we have in the fund. So it's not it's it's not a revolving fund. It's, but it is like a revolving fund. Um. And the issue that we have with with the parking meter and so this fund covers both parking meters in in the Center West Concord and then the commuter lot. So it's 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 more than just just the meters. Um, so any of the stickers that we set sell for the the commuter lots go into this program as well and expenses associated with the lots are borne by this fund. Um, obviously, the issue with the meters is reliability because of cell service. Um, we are not actively enforcing the meters, but we do have people that are that are paying for parking. That has dropped off quite a bit this year versus last year because I think I just think it's pretty widely known that we're not enforcing. So it's surprising that we've collected, I think, almost ninety thousand dollars in fees, even though we're not enforcing.
Mostly from people out in town.
Um, I mean.
Which is great.
Yeah. Um, so I ideally, the the cell issue is resolved and the the meters, ideally, it's resolved and the meters are able to function and and be reliable. And then we would go back to um enforcing them. The issue we have is that there is still no signed agreement between Verizon and the private property owner who we we shouldn't, we shouldn't name in the public session because it's it's still an ongoing negotiation. Um, we hear, we continue to check in with both parties really on a weekly basis and are told each week that there is an agreement. Um. But it's not, there there are still a few sticking points. So if we can't within the next handful of weeks or so, if we if we don't see a signed agreement, I think we have to pursue our second um site, which is not going to be popular. And I know this is only tangentially related to this this article, but we're the the town. The issue with cell services is significant, but for the purposes of of this article, it's important and necessary for us to have reliable service in order to keep this program going. I would hate to throw it out because it's a longstanding program. Um, it may not be the the best parking system currently. Um, but we haven't had the opportunity to evaluate it post-COVID.
I have two comments on that. One is um, we ought to think about the impact of this on the the next two years of the uh greatly enhanced amount of of tourist and visitor traffic. And whether that is going to be in health or hinder. Oh, um.
And the other thing is that I noticed for the first time this winter what a tremendous inconvenience it posed on people shopping in in the town center areas because the sidewalks could not be plowed out to the curb. And so you've got law high snowbanks along the curbs, all which were actually hazardous.
Yep.
And also inconvenient. And um, I I think that may in many ways be the most the strongest negative uh consequence of having parking meters is the fact that you can't plow, there's no convenient way to plow the sidewalks and people are having to climb over snowbanks. Now, we may not have snow in future years when the climate changes, but but then we may not have parking either.
Mm-hmm. I I agree. I agree with Henry, but I have some other questions too. Um, I'm wondering, so expenses totaled two hundred and three thousand. And what are we spending the money on?
So the the general expenses are the maintenance contract on the meters.
Right.
Any hardware replacement, any software upgrades, any fees associated with the collection. Um.
Okay, so my understanding from a previous meeting we had a few months ago was that this contract is going to be up this year, right? And we haven't renewed it yet, right?
We did re- uh, before I get yelled at again. We did renew. That was the meeting that we had for the intermunicipal agreement with Plymouth County for that was the agreement for the ticketing system so that they.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, that's the Plymouth County thing. I thought.
That's a parking ticket, right? That's not parking meters.
Yeah, the meters is a different company, right?
That is a different company. We have extended them through the current year because the program has still been ongoing. We're on a year-to-year agreement with them for the maintenance of the parking meter.
So it's extended. Wait a minute, let me just make sure I understand this. So extended until when?
It's um, we've done it through the end of this year. We're reviewing it on.
Fiscal year, right. That's okay. So getting back to my main point then.
I'm in a fiscal mode, yeah.
Okay, so this fiscal year, June thirtieth, this meter contract expires, right? Okay, so I really don't want to renew it. And um, I would like to save the two hundred and three thousand, save the hazard during the winter. Um, the parking meters are a nuisance, I think, and they are just costing the town money. And we are not getting any benefit, the way I see it. Except maybe from out-of-towners, but um they're not paying the whole two hundred and three thousand. So I I don't see any benefit for keeping these meters regardless of the cell service. Maybe I'm really missing something, but this is our opportunity to take a look at the program because the contract's up. And we haven't renewed it yet. Why are we going to spend two hundred and three thousand dollars? So that's how I see it.
It it's it's program revenue. So if we don't have the, if we don't have the program, we're not going to have the revenue or the expense.
But we already don't have the revenue.
And every twenty.
Ninety thousand dollars of revenue.
Right.
It doesn't cover the expense.
Losing money on this, whatever the numbers are, why renew it? What are the benefits for the town? We're not getting any benefit. It's just a hazard, as Henry said.
So I think the difficulty is anytime we go to the business community and ask about meters, half of the people support them and half of the people don't. Um.
Right.
If we if it doesn't matter to to us, it it may matter to to Megan and and Mimi. Um, you know, from an from an economic vitality standpoint, but from a from a financial standpoint, we certainly understand the issue. Uh, the the concern is that if the if the program goes away, a a program that we've we've had for fifty years or so, if it goes away because the finances are not great right now, when they've historically been enough to support the program, we're we're going to hear about it. And um you know, that that's fine if if the town doesn't want to have the meters. I just would hate i- if we don't, if if there is any thought that we will continue this program and we don't have a budget appropriated for it, we're in a tough spot.
Couldn't we restart it next year?
Yeah, just wait it, tie it for one year and then restart it the next year.
Well, there's also a lot of different ways nowadays to collect parking fees that don't involve individual meters at places that create hazards. Um, and I just think this system has proven to be kind of, well, first of all, of course, very vulnerable to the lack of wireless access. That's been terrible. It's been uh, terrible. But then, secondly, it does seem to have fairly high maintenance costs and it just seems like if you had a kiosk for every, you know, twenty spaces and you had a mo- you know, a little sign and you could do mobile parking, that that's a lot more convenient for most people today.
Yeah.
And it could be less expensive. There's less hardware to manage, you know, less stuff to plow around. It's just a lot simpler.
And it's easier to also like to um change the the fees and the charges.
It's all digital.
Um, so that to encourage people to park at certain times or when there are special events, you know, the fees are lower or whatever, so it you can make it much more flexible.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's a little nostalgia of putting a quarter into a meter, but I don't think it's any greater than the nostalgia people had for stopping at Toll Plaza's.
But if you're gonna put have meters that you just put quarters in, we don't need cell service and we don't need all.
No, it's true.
We should have just kept the old meter.
That's right. The kiosk, the kiosk, though, solution, which I think is is a nice idea, that would require cell service as well, right?
It would require some sort of communications infrastructure.
So Carrie, you said that that was tangential, the cell service, but I I think it's critical to to whether these are going to ever break even or any other solution we think of. And so just for a minute, um do we have a deadline that we can say that if we don't get an agreement by such and such a date from the parties that are now negotiating that we would move to Plan B?
I thought she just.
Yeah. No, she said within the next few weeks, maybe.
Right. We, we just started talking about, we, we think we need to do that. So when we talked to you last about cell, you had suggested that we have a, a public meeting or hearing to get some feedback on the different locations. And so we, we were just talking sometime last week that we probably would do that about a month from now. Um, that we, you know, we, we would want to get the word out. Um, we need a little to get past town meeting, but get the word out and that maybe that would help the negotiation if the parties knew.
If the contract terminates, do they actually take the meters away? Or is it just like it is now where people who don't know that they don't work still put quarters in them? And we don't need a maintenance contract.
Right.
We just have, uh, we just have meters that are.
Old school meters.
Yeah. Old school meters.
Yeah.
I mean, in other words, if the contract expires, what happens then?
Yeah. So the, the meters belong to the town. They're not going to automatically.
So they stay.
Come out. They're, they're going to stay there. Um.
And so that presumably if we decided later to go, we didn't take the meters away and we decided to go back to this system, all the, all the equipment would still be there and would be.
It would be there. Um, it likely, it needs to be upgraded in sometime in the not too distant future.
But that's only if it has to work.
If, if, right. If it has to work, if that's a requirement, that it works.
Well, right now it, it doesn't work really because we don't give anybody tickets.
Right.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the positive, what the benefit of the whole system even is. That's my main reason.
I, and I, I guess what I would say, I think you'll, you'll hear, you'll hear about it. But we, we could try that. The, the message, the important message to communicate is if there is any interest in maintaining the program, we need an appropriated budget. Otherwise those expenses are coming into the general fund and we can't support that. But just having an appropriated budget does not mean that we have to continue with the program.
But we will, because when will we look at it again?
Well, you would have to before the end of the fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
Yeah, but I think we did this last year. Didn't we talk about this last year and say we.
The town meeting, there's 400,000 for it, which is crazy. We're only taking in $90,000. I just, I want to cut costs and I hate the meters. So I just feel very strongly about that this is an easy way to. Maybe we should hear from Megan on that economic vitality, if you have a strong opinion.
Oh, I see.
Marsha, okay.
Okay. Ms. Rasmussen.
As a person who was convinced by Maynard Forbes back in the 1980s that meters were critical to West Concord because the MBTA imposed a fee in their parking lot. Um, and the fear was that commuters would rather not pay the fee and would park on the street, taking up all those spaces. So that's the reason there are meters in West Concord. Um, and they were only installed in the 1980s. I think you need to take a, a step back before you, you unilaterally make a decision about things that are going to impact Concord Center to look at Thoro Depot area because there's also a parking lot where we're collecting fees in front of the stop and shop. There are 50 spaces there that in the past, prior to COVID, we were collecting fees on a regular basis from both residents and non-residents. And the same applies to the West Concord commuter lot. And there's a, a negative impact if you take away the meters on the street that commuters will then park on the street.
Well, but by now they should know that they're not, they're not going to get tickets because they're regular, they're regular users.
So they're parking.
And so we should be seeing the effect of that already. And, and I guess we're not.
Well, there are also other ways to enforce, uh, you know, overstaying in your spot, right? You can have a maximum two hours for the spot or things like that. Now, it does take, uh, of course diligence to enforce that, but then the, the fees are much higher because they're called fines. So that's.
And I was, I, I'm just saying that there, that was the perception and, um, I think making a unilateral decision without getting the full story is not the best approach tonight.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit frustrated because I remember talking, I wasn't on the board, but I remember listening to the select board asking about this. And we approved it and we, you know, kind of kicked it down the road and here we are again. And now we're being told, well, we don't know enough, so we should wait again and approve it. And I'm, I'm, when I, this is the first time I've taken a deep dive in these numbers that Carrie was kind enough to give to us. And it looks like $400,000 of ARPA money was spent to keep these things afloat, to keep the contracts going when we're not using them because they're broken. This just seems to me to defy common sense. So I'm, I'm puzzled. I mean, I hear what people are saying is that be careful because you don't know unintended consequences, but when will we know that?
Well, it does seem like, I mean, we have a failed system.
We do.
And, you know, we need a reset and maybe we need a few consequences to understand what we need to do next. But we, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road.
We are. Right. I agree.
I think we all agree.
Well, I guess, um, you know, I, there's no sense in making a presentation at town meeting, moving the article if the select board isn't going to support it. So it would be helpful to, to understand that.
Okay.
So.
I mean, all I can say is that in the past, I've been supportive of having parking meters. I've been on the, you know, there's the two sides of the fence, as you say.
Yep.
Because of fears about specifically MBTA commuters, but also employees working in downtown offices, overstaying their, their spots. But if we have another, you know, enforcement mechanism that is reasonable, then that, you know, that could take care of that problem. And in the meantime, the meters have continued to be, uh, problematic. They just don't raise, you know, the revenues. They haven't operated technically. They have high maintenance contract fees. It's just not been a very sound business relationship. Um, and so we need a reset.
I agree.
Me too. And I think that when we brought up alternative enforcement in the past, um, because Mary's correct, we kicked the can down the road, but I think this is the third or fourth time that we've kicked it down the road. Um, but anyway, um, I remember, um, the police chief was here or one of the lieutenants, and he said, you can't mark the.
Tires. You can't mark tires.
So we didn't seem to have a clear enforcement mechanism, but I think that maybe we should try a year of experiment. Let's, let's see what the consequences are. Because we keep trying to put 400,000 in every year and it's just crazy.
You know, and one enforcement option might be, I think they are still, the police cars still have plate scanners on them. And driving down the street and scanning plates would give you a very easy way to see how long the cars were there.
Do we have someone in the police department right now that does, I know we used to have their expenses go to this fund, but now I guess they're, do we have a dedicated police officer to do this work? Uh, they, somebody's collecting the quarters.
So we have, um, that is, it's my understanding that's a, a shared responsibility. We used to have one dedicated person.
Okay.
So we have the equivalent of one FTE, but I don't know that it's just one person that's doing that work.
Yep. I understand. Good.
So Carrie, are you wanting a motion from this board?
Well, I think you were, you were going to make a recommendation, but if your recommendation is, um, no action, then we would just pull the warrant article. I mean, I can't, you're, we have to work in cooperation to keep this program going. So if you're not supporting it, we can save the four, four minutes of presentation at town meeting.
Can I make a motion though?
Well, I don't even know if we need a motion, right?
Well, yeah, if you want us to be, you want us to take, take the heat for it, if there's going to be heat.
Well.
Yeah, might as well move.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it doesn't make sense for, for, I, I would prefer that there's a motion and then the result of the motion will be, I will let the moderator know that we won't move forward with that article.
Okay. So I move that the select board recommend no action on article 43.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Uh, opposed.
Okay. Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Thanks.
So it's four to one.
For one. Okay. Um, so that takes us through the parking meters and also through the, uh, discussion of warrant articles. Um, so now, uh, there's.
We can actually make a decision.
What do you mean?
Is that great?
We've been voting all night, Henry.
Yeah, I was going to say. I don't know. Um.
That is hard.
Um, all right. So, uh, the next thing is the form of the town manager evaluations. Um, and so I had distributed a draft document. Um, and, um, here I'll put it up on the screen. So page one is just, uh, Carrie's 30 goals that she set according to the different categories that there were. And so for each one of them, um, you can mark whether she completed the goal, uh, beyond expectations satisfactorily or, uh, was, it was incomplete due to things beyond her control effectively. It's in process, but not completed or completed unsatisfactorily or not done. So there's lots of different choices there, but I think that they equate to things that you could consider positive or negative or neutral.
Is there a time limit?
Well, this is.
Completing it?
Completing the evaluation?
Yeah.
Well, it's just text boxes, checkboxes. It should be pretty quick. Uh, the second is on general leadership and other skills and goals. Now, this was previously six pages of questions. Uh, this, of course, it's more compact, but it, it cuts it down to 28 questions, about half the number that there were before. Um, and, uh, this is really about more generally meeting expectations. So you get from everything from consistently exceeds to consistently meets or exceeds to meets the needs improvement or does not meet or cannot evaluate. Okay? And then the final one is where you can put in your own free text comments on performance. And then finally is the overall rating. And the overall rating relates to terms of Carrie's contract, uh, where there's a bonus that's associated with above satisfactory performance. And so, uh, that is the highest ranking, then satisfactory, then needs improvement and unsatisfactory. So I got comments from Terry. I incorporated some of the comments and we had a discussion about the others. I have not gotten comments from others on the board.
Oh, are we supposed to give you comments? I didn't, oh, sorry.
Well, I mean, if you don't like the form of the evaluation, then we should talk about it. Um, but, uh, if you're okay with this, this is what we would go with.
I'm fine.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Harry, I wasn't able to get it down to a page, but I got it down to three. Um, Linda, did you have any comments?
Matt, um, could you just say a little bit about the changes that were incorporated? And then I'm remembering that I commented at the, um, when this was first introduced and said that, um, some of the board goals, we've relied on the town manager and her staff to execute. And I recall you commenting that that could be incorporated into the comments section, uh, which I, I think is doable, but I would be interested in what changes you made.
Well, um, that was really about the, um, what the questions were on, uh, sheet two. Um, you know, and, uh, trying to narrow down the list from the very large list that we originally had. So that's the main thrust of the comments. And then just clarity of organization by category.
Okay.
Um, and then, yeah, I would hope that.
Does that include Terry's comments?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Because I mean, Terry had originally, uh, suggested some other overall ranking categories. But then I, she was looking at an earlier draft of the contract. And so I think once we figured that.
And the other, the other thing I did, Linda, was I took the old eval that was basically used for many, many years. And then we added to it. So it had become very long. And I wrote in there which ones I thought we should keep and which ones we could take out because they were kind of duplicates. And I think Matt did a really good job of incorporating most or all of those into his one page in part B.
Okay. Thank you.
So the rest is mainly rephrasing, just to be more brief, so it would all fit on a page.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And then the, the process that I would expect is, and the reason why we're getting this form finalized now is that I will participate in the evaluation while Mark will participate in the goal setting. So I won't be a participant in that part, but I would participate in this, whereas he would not, uh, participate in the, in the performance evaluation because he was not on the board during the period. Or at least most of it. Okay.
Okay.
So we're all set. I don't know. Do we need to?
Yeah, I think we need to vote on this.
Okay, yeah.
So it's a public document that we're going to, um, motion to um, approve the form of the town manager evaluation as included in tonight's packet.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Sacramento, aye.
Okay. So now the next, uh, item on the agenda is just a technicality. It's basically that, um, at the end of town meeting, I will no longer be a select board member. We'll swear in a new member. But in the interim, we won't have technically a chair. Um, that will be one of the first orders of business of May 15th, but in order for it to be so, we need to publish an agenda. So to publish the agenda, the first, uh, select board meeting, I just proposed that we, um, determine that tonight. And that would be, you know, normally you begin by electing officers. Uh, the second is that you, uh, talk about, uh, liaison assignments. And the third is that you talk about goals. Um, that's, that's typically the agenda. And then there would be, um, potentially, you know, nominations, uh, and appointments and, um, a consent agenda. And the consent agenda would have, you know, any one day liquor licenses and, and proclamations or anything like that. So is everybody cool with that agenda? And correspondence and public comment?
Well, well, wait a second. Um, we, we just have to allow that, um, Shannon or Carrie may get other business that comes in like, um, changing manager or, you know, this isn't necessarily the complete agenda.
Well, we are, well, except for that, we could designate someone to, to do that. I mean, we could ask Henry to discuss any additional agenda topics with the town manager and put them on the agenda.
Sure.
I just think there's nobody to set an agenda.
I don't know, but if it's like a routine thing, like change a manager or something, it has to go on or.
Yeah.
Or I, I don't know.
I think we are trying to deal with those items on April 30th, so there won't be anything urgent.
Right. But then you got two more weeks after that.
Okay.
So.
Well, I, I.
Hey Linda, how would you suggest we deal with this? I think you've been on the board the longest, right?
Yeah. So the other thing I was going to ask is, um, do we need to, if we're not deciding tonight, do we need to also determine, uh, what date will actually require the town manager's evaluation to be completed?
Well, that won't come until the end of, well, in, until the end of June, right? At least.
Okay. That's what you're anticipating. Okay.
Fiscal year, so.
Right. But I think Linda's right. That should be on the agenda that we discuss the timeframe for the town manager's evaluation, like when's the self eval going to come in?
Okay, but there's time. I mean.
But we just discuss it on. But we just discuss it on May fifteenth, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Oh. And a debrief with Carmen about the town meeting.
Okay. Well, it's getting longer and longer.
And this meeting is going to be the May fifteenth.
May fifteen. Be there, be square.
Or both.
Or both. Six thirty PM. Okay. I, I don't think we need a motion on that.
No.
No.
Okay.
Good work.
Then let's move to nominations.
Okay, nominations. So the first one is the two-two-two-nine Main Street Task Force. And I just want to say before we get into this, as somebody put it, it was an embarrassment of riches. We have so many people that are talented in this town. And thank you for everybody who's volunteered for all of these committees. It was just a pleasure to interview everybody and see all the different talents and it was wonderful. Okay, we nominate for the two-two-two nine Main Street Advisory Task Force, Paul Bohm of Eleven Ridge Wood Road, Gary Kleiman of fifty-seven Central Street, Pamela Hill of fifteen Whittamore Street, David Rowe Peak of twenty-one Baker Avenue, Carrie Flood of twelve eighty-nine Main Street, Carl Sideman of ninety-three Wright Avenue, Kurt Herman of eighty-six Whittamore Street, Frank Rich Feeley of three forty-seven Lexington Road, and Court Booth of one forty-four Wright Road for terms to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, or at the completion of their work on the task force. And you'll notice from this, one name missing is Pam Rockwell. She will be staying on the two-two-two-nine Oversight Committee and we think being the liaison to this task force.
Very good.
Concord Cultural Council, we nominate Robert Gross of four oh one Main Street for a term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. DEI Commission, we nominate Nancy Brown of ninety-six Forest Ridge for a term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Hugh Cargill Trust Committee, Hester Schnipper of six thirty-one Main Street for a term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And PEG Access, Megan Carroll of two seventy-seven Old Bedford Road to complete an unexpired term to expire on May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, and committee appointments?
Hey, Agricultural Committee. We move to appoint Liza Bemis of five Grant Street for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Dan Schmidt of forty-four Baker Farm Road for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Stephen Verrell of four fifteen Wheeler Road for a third term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and to be exempted from APP ten, section seven B. Board of Health, we move James Whalen of sixty-five Dover Street for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Commission on Disability, we move Jean Goldsberry of eighteen thirty-two Main Street for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, we move Keith Bergman of fifty-six White Avenue for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Mike Lawson of sixteen ninety-five Lowell Road for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Town Manager Carrie LaFleur for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Linda Escobedo, Select Board Member, for a term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And Frank Rich Feeley of three forty-seven Lexington Road in accordance with the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw, section four, to correct that, quote, "One less than a majority of the initial trustee appointments shall before a term of one year."
It should be shall be for.
Shall be for, a, thank you, a term of one year. Okay. And we nominate to the DEI Commission, G. Orloff of thirty-four East Circle for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And for Historic Districts Commission, Dennis Fiori of three oh nine Strawberry Hill Road as an associate member to represent the Select Board for a term to expire January first, two thousand twenty-six, and to be exempted from APP ten, section seven B. Hugh Cargill Trust Committee, we nominate, we appoint Elizabeth Eldon of three forty-seven Old Bedford Road for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Natural Resources Commission, we move to appoint Sarah Grimwood, five twenty Lexington Road, for a term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Recreation Commission, Pete Funkhauser of two sixty-six Main Street for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. West Concord Advisory Committee, John Cooley of eighty Highland Street for a second term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Ravi Fia of one sixty-nine Plainfield Road as a full member for a first term to expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Good luck to the next clerk reading all this stuff every week.
Well, it's always this time of year.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Ms. Escobedo.
It's all or nothing.
Maybe she stepped out for a minute.
All right.
Ms. Hartman.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Ackerman, aye. Uh, Ms. Escobedo?
Yes, I, I have one minor correction to what was read.
Okay. We already started, but let's go for it.
To the under the Concord Municipal Housing Trust, you read correctly the corrective action for Rich Feeley, but it should say for, for a current term to end April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Okay. Does everyone agree we're amending our vote?
Thanks for that question, that correction. All right.
Great.
All right. So for the correspondents, I wanted to acknowledge five pieces of correspondence in the packet. One promoting MBTA Quiet Zones, or trying, asking us to support that. And then three opposing the Hanscom Airfield expansion. And then also included as correspondence, but also just part of their charge is a quarterly middle school building committee report.
That is out of date.
That is already, some of the dates on it are out of date because of recent developments with the bidding objections. Yes.
I, I have a comment about the flurry of correspondences we're getting around Hanscom. And I wonder if it would be a good idea to bring our two reps in to inform us as far as what's going on there. I think we've got Ira Goldman is the Massport Community Advisory Committee and Mark Giddings from, I guess it's the Hanscom Field Advisory Committee. Because I'm just, you know, I, I hear a lot, I run into people in town. There's a lot of information out there. I, I think the select board should be brought up.
That's great.
I, I agree. I've been trying to run through the liaison report and it's.
You can't, it's, so I, I think we need to be grounded because I'm hearing a lot. And I wonder if we can put that, put that, put that on the.
Maybe on the May twenty-second agenda.
Good.
And if we.
I just want to float that out there, let's do that.
Correspondence to go to the governor or to the state administration, it probably should come from the advisory group rather than.
They have already sent in a letter.
They have.
Yes.
You know, what I'm hearing, and we can talk about this when they're here, is that we should also be working at the federal level.
Yeah.
Because it's FAA that's behind a lot of this. It's not just Massport. So these are things I think we need to discuss and, and learn about.
You thought.
Yeah, okay. So that was correspondence. Then next we have liaison reports. So I want to note that, Tanya, you've had your, your hand up. Did you have a point of process or is it a public comment?
Oh, thanks, thanks for asking. No, it's a public comment. I, I wasn't.
Well, wait till the public comment.
Yes, yes.
And Ms. Proctor, same thing?
Same thing.
Okay, so we have liaison reports standing between you and your public comments. So who would like to make their, yes, Mary?
I'll go first. Everything we talked about already when we were going over the articles. But I went to the Concord Housing Roundtable that was hosted by the RHSO. And that was, that was really wonderful because we had almost all of the important committees there. And I think we're finally aligned and talking with each other. And we had the planning board there, we had the select board there, Matt did a great job. We had CPC there and then all the usual suspects from the housing groups. It was a great, it was a great night.
And I think Keith Bergman did a nice job.
He did a great job. So that's, I think we're off to, I think we finally coalesced and we'll work together.
Great.
Other comments? All right, Terry?
Okay. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, we have a memo from Marcia Rossmussen that the Route Two Bridge might be open as soon as May thirty-first. And there will be some sort of open event commemorating it in June. I went to the Holocaust Memorial last night. It was a very well-organized event. Matt gave an intro speech. Very good turnout. I was at the DEI survey presentation. Two-two-two-nine Main Street, I was at a community meeting that they have maybe quarterly, every so often. All, all of the candidates for the task force were invited and about half of them were able to go and they had a tour of the property. The cleanup is proceeding very well. So the task force is going to be starting at a really good time. And they think it will continue through twenty-six. And then the site restoration can begin in twenty-seven and the EPA sign off and ready for reuse by two thousand twenty-eight. So we still have a few years to go, but we're proceeding very well. And finally, on the Hanscom, at the last meeting I was at, the chair had done some research and sees no evidence for their argument about reducing flights, these ferry flights. A ferry flight is when it comes in empty to pick up someone or drop someone off. He looked through all the data and he can't find any evidence. And there are five hundred signatures on a petition to stop the project. But the question is, if it stopped, would a worse project come in? Because the land is there and Massport wants to do something with it. So I really like Mary's suggestion. We'll, we'll have all. And the chair was recommending in terms of the HFAC, that maybe Senator Barrett was kind of correct, that something's going to have to go there. So let's try to have it as quiet, as green, and as harmless to the environment as possible, that we can negotiate some mitigation.
Okay, thank you.
We had a, we had a Patriot State Parade on Patriot State.
Oh, yeah.
We did.
And it was a very big step in the right direction in getting, in revolve and, in reviving that piece of our civic culture. And in spite of a little bit of rain, it was, it went off very well and we had a good crowd watching it.
Well attended.
And in fact, the, the problem that we had was a good one to have, and that was there were too many bands with not enough space between them. So we need more filler. And, and so it, but it, it went off very well. And it was twice as big as last year. And we have the infrastructure there to keep building it for the next two years for the two hundred and fiftieth.
Okay. Linda?
Yep, so I'm into a recent CPC meeting where they were deliberating right up to the last minute about their position and presentation for the town meeting. And that was very informative. Also attended the roundtable, which I concur, Mary was excellent. Also attended the DI, DEI survey results meeting. That, that was helpful to hear. And all, all of the results now are on, on the website, apparently have been posted. And other thing I would, and I think that's the highlights. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I attended the Ellen Garrison Event, the first, the launch event of the two-fiftieth. It was a beautiful event at the Catholic Church next door and then moving over here for the reception at the townhouse. As people have noted, I presented at the Holocaust Remembrance Event. I thought it was a very moving event. Then the DEI Commission, I attended their discussion of preparations for town meeting. The Financial Audit Advisory Committee, we discussed the audit report for the two thousand twenty-two audit. So it was interesting to look retrospectively at the same times we're looking at future budgets, but there it was. And things are in generally good shape. That's another important statement to make, but we do need more members on the Audit Advisory Committee. And really, I think that former finance committee members should be targeted for this role. I think it's this kind of skills that, that would be helpful. And it's not a big lift in terms of the number of meetings relative to some of the other boards and committees. And, and then I attended the dawn salute, which was very sparsely attended.
I was there.
Well, so up at where the, yeah, it was.
Did you see the horsemen? It was beautiful.
Yeah, it was beautiful, but there were only about fifty people. I counted about fifty people. And while the weather wasn't ideal, I, I thought that it could have been better to publicize this event because it's very special.
It is.
It is. It's, it's a nice thing.
It was really.
So those are the highlights, I would say.
It was, yep.
So look forward to seeing people at town meeting on Sunday. And now I think we'll move to public comment. So if you have a public comment, I see Tanya Galus, please raise your hand, announce yourself and make your comment.
Hi there, Tanya Galus, sixty-two Prescott Road. So thank you very much for voting unanimously to support Article ten. That's superb. Thank you, Kerry, for your remarks as well on that account. I, I raised my hand early because you were discussing your agenda for May fifteenth. And I thought I, I misunderstood that you were interested in public comments at the time. And I was going to say, mention about the Hanscom letters that I'm glad some, some of you pointed out that those letters are not just opposed to Hanscom. They are actually asking you to write a letter to the governor to do all she can to stop the project because she's probably one of the very few people in the country who can do something about it. And the, I hope you do that. And by the way, the petition right now has nineteen ninety-nine signatures on it, not five hundred. It's one nine 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 right now. I think that's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Proctor?
Thank you, Matt. A terrific meeting, as, as usual. I, and Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road, I wanted to say that, that, that I was going to tell you that there are close to two thousand signatures on those petitions. And I would urge you, when you're putting together the panel to discuss Hanscom, to get the Save Our Heritage Group involved in the presentation. Their research is absolutely outstanding. They're located right here on ninety-one Main Street. Anna Winters and Katie Witchell and their board helped to make a significant difference in the expansion of Hanscom once before. Getting them involved with the detail and information they have can do nothing but forward the discussion in a substantial way. So thank you.
Thank you. And then I see our town moderator.
Hi there. It occurs to me with respect to Article 17, the CPS Concord Public Schools Budget, that you may wish to consider making your statement on behalf of the Select Board when the Finance Committee moves its amendment rather than when the main motion is made. And I just want to make sure that you were aware that the Finance Committee is planning to make an amendment. They have a presentation ready to do that. And their plan will be to make that amendment immediately after the main presentation is concluded. And the schools will then have an opportunity to respond. And since the Select Board's position is really in support of that amendment rather than in support of the the main motion, it's just a thought that you may wish to delay your comments until the.
It would be in favor of the amendment rather than in favor of the motion. Yes.
So clarification on that, is the amendment that the Finance Committee going to make, is that in the amount of their guideline number?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's exactly what they're going to do. And the other thing I wanted to note for you is that with the decision not to move Article 43, by my count, I expect that we will have 17 articles for full deliberation. And if we calculate 15 or 20 minutes as an average amount of time, that gives us somewhere around five or five and three quarters hours of deliberation time. So that's certainly a workload that should be able to be completed on Sunday and Monday night.
Yeah, I almost worried that we might not have enough for Monday night to get a crowd back in the room. That would be the concern. Okay.
Well, I should note that I haven't included preliminaries or the consent calendar in that calculation. So, so you know, it'll be, I think we're going to overlap on the Monday night. But I think we won't have a late night on Monday.
All right, thank you. And I see we have a speaker here in the room.
Hi, Mark Howell, 668 Nurse Nick Hill. I'm a little bit concerned about the decision not to move Article 43 for the parking meters. While I agree that they're ineffective and non, bordering on non-functional. It was a pretty complicated program to put together to do the meters. I was actually involved in getting it implemented. There are a number of contracts associated with them. And the parking, we talk about it like the parking meters, but we're also really talking about the commuter lot receipts and I believe some other small programs that are associated with them. And unwinding that in, you know, against the hard deadline of July 1, lack of appropriation for the program in general is probably a pretty big unexpected lift for town staff. So on, you know, looking at the other side of that, town meeting is not going to necessarily, you know, notice the whys and the wherefores of that. I strongly think that it would be appropriate for us to set a goal to come up with an effective economic vitality promoting parking program that worked on, the two word, the word is, I forget whether it's one word or two, that came to mind while you were having that debate was streetlights. I thought about when we took a fairly precipitous action to remove a whole lot of streetlights, ended up with, I think, articles across two different town meetings going forward, trying to, you know, rectify that situation and ended up costing ourselves some money. So I think it's a, it's long overdue to be addressed. I think that, you know, had the pandemic not intervened, the ineffectiveness of the parking meters would have been exposed even before that. That said, I'm still concerned about sort of pulling the rug out from under it without knowing exactly what was planned next. So that's my comment.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'd like to get rid of the streetlights again.
Yeah. Maybe people would agree with you on that one too, but that was.
Sometimes you just have to.
Sometimes you do.
Stake in the heart.
But announce you're going vampire hunting.
All right, well, any more public comment?
No.
All right. I think that that takes care of it, so.
That's Carmen.
Oh, Carmen, do you have another comment? Yes?
Yeah, just one thought. Mark Howell's remarks reminded me that there was a very significant study done of the parking situation by Nelson Nygaard. And I think it was, the date of it was 2019. So it's around and.
Yeah, it was much earlier, I was on the planning board, I know, because I didn't like that study personally, but yes.
Well, anyway, it's got information and data and background. And I think it was influential in the decisions that the town made at the time. So it's just kind of useful as background information.
Okay, thank you. All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.